1972, un an après avoir quitté le Bank of Uganda, Mobiru a été choisi des bureaux de Impala à travers la rue Kemathi et a été emmené, jamais vu de nouveau. Mobiru a fait une grande différence pour le Bank of Uganda et l'industrie bancaire du monde entier. Mais les racines qu'il a plantées ont duré longtemps. C'est grâce à cette contribution importante que le Bank of Uganda a introduit le cours de révélation Joseph Mobiru. Le cours est organisé annuellement, discutant des sujets économiques et financiers par des personnalités de secteur financier. Chiinji Semianu a remplacé le gouverneur Mobiru. Malgré son arrivée dans les grands vêtements, son expérience et son entraînement l'ont qualifié. Il, cependant, a加入到银行时， quand le pays était économiquement stressé et que les exportations du pays avaient baissé 9%, tandis que les importations ont augmenté 20%. Cette économe de stress a été complétée par la crise monétaire globale, qui a vu le président Nixon d'Amérique déconnecter le dollar américain de la pierre. Cela a contraint l'économie en pleine crise, en considérant que trois ans plus tôt, le pays avait transféré un pourcentage considérable de sa réserve au dollar. Pour rendre les choses pire pour Chiinji, le 8 août 1972, peu d'un an après sa présidence, le président Amin a expulsé les Asiens et d'autres foreigners considérés comme exploitant l'économie du pays.
Un soir, Amin était mort. Il a dit qu'il avait reçu un rêve, qu'en cas de besoin pour le pays, il devait se débarrasser de ces gens.
Le Bank of Uganda s'est impliqué directement dans l'exercice d'expulsion dévastateur afin de répondre à leur date de sortie que le président Amin avait fixée. Mme Janet Kahirimbani, qui était en train d'étudier à l'époque, est venue face à face avec les conséquences.
Ils étaient supposés dire ce qu'ils avaient. Dans leurs formes, ils décrivaient combien de monnaie ils avaient laissé. Ils mettaient leur déclaration bancaire si la monnaie était dans l'entreprise. Et vous donnez, à partir de là, un équivalent de 1000 chélingues. Probablement, le défi que nous avons eu était parce que nous avions besoin de plusieurs autres personnes des départements et ministères autres du gouvernement. Pour nous aider, parce qu'il y aurait une queue venant de l'avant de l'entreprise jusqu'à la PDCA. Des longues queues, il y en avait beaucoup.
Le décret de Amin semblait être un mouvement populiste, informé par les sentiments prévalents de certaines sections de la société.
Il y avait des gens qui les accusaient d'avoir profité plus que les Ugandais en termes d'échange foreign. Et qu'ils n'avaient pas largement employé les Ugandais.
Les célébrations ont été peu vives. Les gens se sont vite rendus compte que le décret servait plutôt à désintégrer toute la structure économique, certains effets de lesquels le pays encore expérimente.
Les gens qui géraient la production étaient expulsés du pays.
La communauté commerciale a changé overnight de la communauté asiatique à tout le monde.
La production semblait être bloquée.
L'isolation internationale du pays pour une économie déjà désloquée a aussi empêché la participation du pays aux marchés internationaux à cause d'une carence de fournitures nécessaires résultant d'un manque d'échange foreign.
Quand on a expulsé les Asiens, les Brits ne se sont pas étonnés. Quand on a expulsé les Israéliens, le boycott est venu. On devait payer en monnaie pour les importations. Et cela n'était pas bon pour l'économie.
Mme Sarah Odong, maintenant retenue, était à l'époque en charge de la section visible de contrôle de l'échange. Et elle partage le malheur que le bank a expérimenté en gérant l'échange foreign pendant ces temps difficiles.
Nous devions regarder chaque et toutes les applications pour satisfaire nos besoins. Mais l'application numéro un était authentique et aussi qu'il y avait de l'échange foreign pour servir cette application particulière. Donc la pression à cause de cela et une communauté commerciale qui venait juste dans le commerce overnight sans aucune connaissance de comment gérer le business était assez difficile, surtout quand certains d'entre eux n'étaient pas seulement hauts en rangs, mais parfois même des forces armées.
Le désapprobation de l'expulsion asiatique et le déficit inhérité parmi les challenges continues ne l'ont pas favorisé aux yeux de Amin. Il a été succédé par Onegi Obel en août 1973.
Onegi Obel était très dur sur les soldats de Amin. Et il ne permettait pas aux soldats de Amin de marcher dans l'entreprise et juste arrêter des gens comme ça.
Le pays avait été isolé et donc n'avait aucun échange foreign, limitant les activités de l'entreprise à servir comme un bureau de forex. Tout le monde, du ministre jusqu'aux soldats jusqu'aux officiers du gouvernement, allait à l'entreprise en recherche d'échange foreign.
Certaines fois, il était pensé que l'échange foreign était un officier de l'entreprise.
Je me souviens quand les soldats de Amin cherchaient le monsieur échange foreign et ils n'avaient pas cherché le monsieur. Ils étaient arrêtés sans monnaie. Donc ils sont venus avec des billets pour aller à l'entreprise.
Et puis quand les autorités nous ont dit, ils ont dit :« Si c'est un bureau, disons que ce monsieur échange foreign n'est jamais à l'office. »
Je pense que c'était un homme qui a dit :« Est-ce que c'est le premier qui a dit ?»« S'il vous plaît, donnez-moi, je pense, un pound. »« Un peu de pound, je dis. »« Ce forex n'est pas échange foreign. »
Quand il a été expliqué que en fait l'échange foreign était la monnaie foreign qu'on utilisait pour importer des biens, ils se sont sentis que cela pourrait être détruit et qu'ils commençaient à importer des chélingues du pays. Simple comme ça. C'est un autre type d'économie.
En 1978, Onegi Obel a été remplacé par le honneur Henri Kajura.
Initialement, il m'a appris à être le directeur du bureau de gestion de l'entreprise commerciale du pays. Et Onegi Obel a été appris gouverneur de l'entreprise. Je pense que Onegi Obel a échoué. Donc Amin a dit :« Alors, pourquoi ne pas aller à l'entreprise centrale ?» C'était très difficile pour moi de refuser.
Amin est également jugé enterprenant dans les temps difficiles où l'Ouest avait isolé le pays. Il a fait confiance aux pays islamiques qui sont venus en aide en fournissant le support financier nécessaire.
J'ai voulu être très friendly à toute la communauté mondiale. Il est allé et a dit aux gens, particulièrement au monde islamique, que le pays était un pays musulman. Donc certains de ces fonds qu'il obtenait, ils étaient juste des fonds, pas des loups.
La crise du café international a aussi aidé le pays à gagner de l'argent.
C'est pourquoi Amin a pu commencer ces grands projets, l'aéroport, le restaurant et ainsi de suite.
En avril 1979, la gouverneurie de Amin a été overthrowée par la part des forces tanzanaises. La nouvelle Fronte nationale de libération du pays, UNLF, a appris un nouveau gouverneur, Gideon Nkogio. Nkogio est un Ugandais qui travaillait pour le World Bank à Washington depuis les années 60. Pendant son courte durée de service, le gouverneur Nkogio est principalement crédité pour l'opposition à la coopération et la partenariat de la communauté internationale, particulièrement le Fonds international de monnaie et le World Bank. C'est une tâche qu'il a bien géré, étant donné son expérience et ses réseaux internationaux. Les perturbations politiques continues ont fait impossible de réaliser de nouvelles plans.
Je me souviens qu'il a découvert qu'il y avait un peu de confusion sur les élections en 1980. Il pensait que c'était le moment pour qu'il parte. Donc il a parti et est revenu à la World Bank. Et puis j'ai pris le over et j'ai été appris gouverneur après deux ou trois mois.
À l'époque de sa confirmation, le Bank of Uganda a activement participé à l'entente des effets d'une économie détruite.
Nous avons hérité d'une grande quantité d'inflation. Les prix en 1979-80 ont augmenté de 200%.
La nouvelle gouverneure reinstalée UPC avait promis de mettre l'économie à nouveau à ses pieds. Le gouvernement était tellement engagé dans cette poursuite que le président Obote a assumé le poste de ministre de finance, quelque chose qui n'avait pas eu lieu avant.
Nous avons essayé de mettre cet crédit ensemble de sorte que cela aiderait les entreprises qui ne pouvaient pas facilement accéder au marché d'importation. L'équipement était ici et il voulait le loan et ils lui donnaient l'équipement.
Le commitment de l'entreprise a aussi fait que le gouvernement soit plus coopératif, étant donné que l'administration et les employés s'appliquaient tous dans leurs capacités pour révampoler l'économie. Le président Obote a libéré le chélingue pendant le relaçage du budget en 1981-1982 le 1 juin 1981. La décision de libérer le marché a été recommandée localement et internationalement. Les modifications monétaires ont aussi amené à bord un système d'échange dual, qui a été développé avec des sentiments patriotiques de recouvrir certains secteurs.
Le taux d'échange dual a donné un taux d'échange préferentiel à des importations prioritaires comme le pétrole. Et nous avons fait ça. Et puis tous les autres, les consommateurs étaient capables d'importer des biens consommateurs à la rate définie par le marché.
En général, le pays a commencé à expérimenter le progrès vers la récupération économique.
Parce que les crédits de mise à jour que nous avons reçus de l'OMF étaient capables de gérer cette grosse déficite budgétariale pendant ce temps. Et à peu près en 1984, le déficit budgétaire avait diminué à environ 35% de 75% de dépenses totales.
Maintenant, bien que pendant ce régime d'Obote, l'économie commençait à stabiliser. Le gouvernement d'Obote était en même temps en face d'une guerre. Ici au pays, près d'Impala, il n'est pas facile, vous savez, de stabiliser une économie quand vous êtes face à une guerre comme celle-là.
L'issue de whether Lune voulait être président, Benaisa voulait être président, Museven voulait être président, qui d'autre ?
Le 27 juillet 1985, le président Milton Obote a été overthrowé par ses généraux Tito Okello-Lutwa et Basilio Okello. En août 1985, le gouverneur Chibirango a été summoné au bâtiment du parlement pour discuter avec le général des actions qu'il voulait prendre ainsi que de lui fournir quelques informations. L'issue de la change de monnaie était aussi une question clé.
Nous savions que ce n'était pas juste de changer la monnaie. Mais je pense que ce qu'ils voulaient c'était qu'ils prennent leur portrait dans les notes de monnaie. Nous avons essayé de résister à cela et nous l'ont résisté autant que possible.
Le 26 janvier 1986, l'armée de résistance nationale a annoncé la takeover de la gouverneurie. La nouvelle gouverneurie a promis de restaurer la paix, une bonne gouvernance et la démocratie, mais encore plus urgentement engagée à transformer l'économie nationale, qui avait été détruite. Pour atteindre cette vision de transformation économique, le Dr Sulaiman Chigundu, qui avait été à Don at Makere University, a été appris gouverneur. Le premier jour de service de Chigundu a coïncidé avec la première visite du groupe international de fonds monétaires à l'Uganda depuis la takeover du NRM de la gouverneurie. Initialement, le gouvernement du NRM avait été opposé à l'internationale domination de l'économie et avait préféré l'isoler. Cependant, après près d'un an en gouverneurie, la réalité a frappé que si leur vision de récupération économique était réelle, ils avaient besoin de la communauté internationale.
Le président était réticent. Mais à cause de la situation, parce que c'était un temps, il a dit :« Si vous voulez que nous vous aidions à reconstruire l'économie, si vous voulez que nous faisons ces programmes spéciaux pour vous, vous devez faire ça. »
Nous sommes les plus grands facteurs pour notre budget. Et bien sûr l'économie en soi, nous ne pouvions pas taxer suffisamment pour être capable de faire ce que vous voulez faire.
Tout d'abord, c'était plus une question de stabilisation. Une patiente était en coma. L'économie était en coma et nous essayions de la ramener à la vie.
Avec l'attention complète de l'écrasation financière que le pays expérimentait, le groupe du Bank of Uganda a beené avec la negotiation avec les officiers de l'OMF des domaines de préoccupation, y compris le grand déficit budgétaire, qui était financé de manières qui accéléraient l'inflation et la depreciation de la monnaie.
Les ministres de la Défense auraient besoin de chélingues du pays à la notice. Et même le Bank of Uganda n'aurait pas eu parfois eu des problèmes en raising the money they needed. Ils avaient besoin de lots et lots.
Nous avions très peu de revenu. Donc ce que nous avons fait était de imprimer de l'argent. Nous imprimions de l'argent à chaque étape.
Pour rendre les choses pires, même le café qui recouvrait l'économie avait été menacé et n'était pas capable de contribuer à l'économie.
Le bureau de marketing du café avait emprunté durement. Ils ne pouvaient pas rembourser les banques. Donc quand le temps est venu autour de Noël, les banques ont refusé de donner plus d'argent au bureau de marketing du café pour acheter du café. Ce qui était un problème du café est devenu un problème politique.
Pour ajouter de l'huile à l'embarras, les dettes étaient sur les chaussures du gouvernement en demandant de payer.
Nous devions rechercher de l'assistance technique de notre World Bank IMF pour nous obtenir un conseil de management externe. Nous avons pu créer immédiatement un nouveau département appelé EBM, bureau de gestion externe de dettes.
Avec une image claire de l'endettement externe, qui en 1987 se situa à 1,4 million de dollars, le gouvernement a pu trouver une stratégie pour négocier des advances de loups chers, des réductions et la rémunération de certains des dettes.
Donc il y avait une décision que nous devrions tout d'abord faire un audit de dette pour comprendre qui étaient nos créateurs externes. Les paysans et reconcentrer-les.
Nous avons offert un prêt de 4 cents pour chaque dette pour le crédit commercial. Prenez-le tout, nous ne vous payons jamais. Et pour le crédit commercial, nous négocions une concession et des fonds pour financer la dette. Étant donné le bon rôle de la nouvelle gouverneurie et de la communauté internationale, parce que nous avions ouvert des relations avec l'OMF et la World Bank, nous avons obtenu de l'aide du club parisien. Donc c'était une combinaison de mesures à prendre. Qui a finalement cumulé en HIPC 1 et HIPC 2, qui était le déficit officiel qui a été annulé.
Enfin, le premier dépassement du soutien long attendu du Fonds international de monnaie a été avancé. Le Bank of Uganda a été mandaté à superviser et à assurer qu'il soit mis à bon usage.
Nous avons discuté et nous avons acquis que cette monnaie allait être utilisée pour financer les matériaux nécessaires pour produire des produits qui étaient utilisés par le public.
Le soutien avait des conditions attachées que le gouvernement avait accepté d'observer. Dans le paquet économique accordé entre le gouvernement du pays, le World Bank et l'OMF, la démonétisation de la monnaie pour réduire la liquidité était un élément clé.
Obote avait déjà décidé sur un format de monnaie. Et les détails avaient déjà été faits par le gouverneur et le groupe du Bank of Uganda, qui étaient là à l'époque. Donc quand la nouvelle gouverneurie est venue, il a été décidé de continuer.
En mai 1987, l'exercice a été réalisé.
La nouvelle monnaie allait être introduite en supprimant les deux zéros. Mais même avec cela fait, la supply de monnaie était toujours très haute. Nous avons eu l'idée de lever un 30%.
Pouvez-vous baisser l'autre ? Et remettre le micro ? Ok, merci. Mesdames et messieurs, bonjour à vous tous. Merci beaucoup. Je vous vois dans les prochaines minutes. DJ, où que vous soyez, appelez votre station. [Rapport de la radio] Once again I want to Still welcome you to this session Like I said we are starting in the next few minutes But I want to Specifically thank those who were with us yesterday Yes yesterday we had A public engagement and at least I have seen A few faces that we interacted with I think and believe that was a fruitful discussion Even the follow-ups And any questions that were left over from yesterday's discussion Will likely be handled today's session I want to request that for the meantime We fill the registration forms and then we have them collected The ASHA's, the team will come to you and Collect the registration forms this morning The evaluation forms will come at the end so you keep those And fill them towards the end of this session I know in our midst we have Quite a number of leaders But we shall introduce Each one of you we shall introduce and recognize At an appropriate time But feel just know we know you are here And when that time comes we shall keep Recognizing and introducing you We will start our program in the next few minutes with The singing of the anthems That will be followed by the opening prayer And this will be led by the The subdean of the cathedral in Bali representing the bishop Immediately after the prayer we shall have Remarks of the director communications Who is our main host here We will also have remarks by the city Arasisi When she is here And likely the district chairperson Because he has here also indicated he will be here And straight away we shall go to the remarks of the deputy governor And after his remarks we shall go to that main discussion Question and answer session That we shall be holding here So in the meantime use the time to interact with a friend next to you I know DPF came together but you might not be knowing yourselves At least establish the kikisun name that you have so far got And we be sure you are going back as Wamasawa So you keep that interaction so that you know You might be thinking he is Balan but same para but when he has changed to Masawa Yes So let's skip the next few minutes for the interactions As the DJ keeps us on for the moment
10 billion yahi is coming
Sarongo Ya wanda rich here
How is you?
Not bad
How is swam?
Yes Our house is funny
What?
Our house is funny
Funny?
He the whole house
Okay
Oh my man My man Oh my god Oh my god Oh my god That's not good Yeah
Mukasa is to keep your money in this house
Avoid keeping money in ceilings Gardens, pits and pest prone areas So as to minimize the risk of losing it Money is precious handle with respect This message is brought to you by Bank of Uganda
Since the dawn of time Small businesses have struggled with their accounting Until now QuickBooks Online handles all your invoices expenses
If I can get 250 thousand I think I can shoot Yes What? I have got the money right now Okay just a minute just in five Good evening good afternoon
May I help you?
Thank you very much My wife has been brought here for the purposes of producing for me a very beautiful child I am the husband I have brought the money
In fact she is about to give birth
About?
And we are waiting for you to bring her
I didn't know that babies nowadays need to pay stomach exiting food Yes
Do you really keep the money in your house?
Yes what is wrong with you?
Oh but don't you see your money is damp? Can't you make touches?
Avoid keeping money in places like gambouts, socks and other inner clothing As it gets damp with sweat and affects its lifespan Keep your money in a clean and dry environment Money is precious handle with respect This message is brought to you by Bank of Uganda
What is it? Why are you giving me these small coins?
Have you not given you all your money?
Can't you give me something better than this?
Better than what? Is a DJ lego tender for Bank of Uganda?
I don't need these coins give me my money I said give me my money
Young lady
What is it?
Young lady Don't you know that it is wrong to reject a national currency of any denomination? You should respect it and know that all money has value
Bank of Uganda issues coins in the denominations of Uganda shillings 1, 2, 5, 10, 50, 100, 200, 500 and 1000 They are all lego tender in Uganda and should be accepted for all transactions Money is precious handle with respect This message is brought to you by Bank of Uganda
You know what guys? This was a very good day
Yes it was I wish you could do better with your money instead of having fun and buying new clothes
Not this time nowe I'm tired of renting I'm renting money to acquire a life
Ntale nawe you really have to keep your money in chako Why are you going to give that dirty money full of chako?
Money is money my friend Do you know how many people will die to have this Dirty man of mine?
Enough Ntale Stop behaving like a child Don't you know that keeping money badly damages it? Just look how bad the money you've been keeping looks like before I didn't go anymore
Stained elements like chako, soil, ink, oil and others Reduce the strength and lifespan of currency Always protect your money regardless of your work environment Money is precious handle with respect This message is brought to you by Bank of Uganda
Uganda shilling has continued to decline
Every two months the Bank of Uganda governor announces a policy interest rate called Central bank rate To clearly signal the monetary policy stance going forward In line with the bank mission to foster price stability and a sound financial system
The Bank of Uganda will raise the CBR rate By 1.5 percentage points To 14.5% immediately
The bank pursues this mission through formulating policies that have helped mitigate systemic risks to the Ugandan financial system Issuing currency Protecting the financial sector from potential financial shocks and risks through consistent surveillance Ensuring a sound financial sector by supervising and regulating financial institutions Overseeing the foreign exchange sector Promoting a sound economy through advising government on the financial sector Serving as a bank for commercial banks and the government On the 15th of August 2016 Bank of Uganda made 50 years The celebrations to mark this milestone which were presided over by President Museveni Were held on the 3rd of August 2016 at Serena Hotel
Happy birthday to the Bank of Uganda
On the 50 years of Bank of Uganda And I wish you
Happy 50th anniversary
50 years not a short time So nice jubilee
Looking back at the difficulties and tough times through which the bank has persevered One cannot help but appreciate the spirit in which these congratulatory messages have been given
One of the key challenges which government was facing and which Uganda was facing Was the amount of external debts which the government which had incurred I think it amounted to about 3 billion US dollars
We also went through wars Two wars 1979 and 1986 Which also became a challenge especially with our country centers
Challenge is notwithstanding Bank of Uganda has succeeded in delivering on its mandate to build, maintain and develop Uganda's financial sector
The economy is running normally There's a bit of inflation from time to time But it's under control
This documentary highlights the 50 year Bank of Uganda journey Bank of Uganda was officially inaugurated on the 15th of August 1966 When President Dr Milton Obote laid a foundation stone for its permanent headquarters Government had ambitiously but determinedly set to start a national central bank Following the aborted efforts to set up an East African central bank
An official Of the De La Rue Company Intentionally linked to me As a The secretary of the Ugandan task force That I have already struck a deal To Have the contract for Bank of Tanzania So I took a cue And Telephone to Frank Kalimuru Who was the secretary at the cabinet I narrated to him what I had heard Our task force was asked to do two things To continue attending the preparatory committee work At the same time quietly Prepare Work for the Committee which was now being formed now For Bank of Uganda establishment So side by side arrangements were being made To ask Bank of England to send officials to come quietly to work within Uganda
In November 1965 Mr Lewis arrived with the responsibility of drafting the Bank of Uganda legislation Recruiting and training staff Modifying Liverpool House to suit currency center needs And arranging for shipping and storage of the new currency He was joined by Mr Anthony Parker Who became the country's first exchange manager And George Palmer Lambe who assumed the role of general manager The three played an instrumental role in setting up the bank's internal structures Joseph Mubiru was appointed the first governor, Bank of Uganda
Four of us who were working We knew Ian Lewis Was going to be the first governor But The young politicians then were trying to push That with independence coming There was no need to continue Bringing colonists to those top positions That was the political thinking then
A seminarian from a highly religious family Who initially studied philosophy with the intentions of becoming a priest Joseph Mubiru had first worked as a bank clerk before going to India for further studies Mubiru was appointed assistant secretary to the committee that formed Africa Development Bank He completed the task and returned to Uganda where he got appointed as head of the newly founded Uganda Credit and Savings Bank That later became Uganda Commercial Bank He took time off his busy schedule at UCB to chair the committee that drafted the bank statute As the institution charged with issuing and protecting the country's national currency Bank of Uganda set off with the task of converting the existing East African currency board Currency into Uganda's new national currency This was a milestone considering the journey to getting a national currency that started with Bata Trade
Towards the end of Bata Trade The East African region experienced the beginning of the building of the East African railway That's about 1886 Now most of the workers on the Uganda railway Were from India and they would be paid in the rupee Now the rupee used to work side by side with the gold shells But the rupee became so popular and that's why in Uganda euro was like rupiya Now however The rupee became so
Uh DJ
The imperial British East African company
Good morning once again ladies and gentlemen We are set to start Our program today I know everybody is wanting me to introduce the title but that one will come at its time But we are going to start with the national anthems then we shall follow with the prayer From Papa Subdean of the cathedral And then straight away in our program We shall go into the remarks by the director communications That will be followed by the city leadership or the district leader And then remarks by the deputy governor And straight away into our question and answer session I want to ask the The stewards to please minimize the movements So that we can start off with the anthems Alright let's all raise up We shall start with the Uganda national anthem Follow it with the East African anthem And this is Bugisu we shall sing the Wamasawa anthem DJ let's go together Thank you very much, we shall remain standing for the opening prayer.
I'm going to lead in this prayer. I'm the Reverend Eridadi Milton Shisa, from St Andrews Cathedral, Dieneri, Bali Diocese. While I was asked to share, to pray, a scripture that came into my mind, which is very related and must be relevant to this occasion. The Bible says in the Deuteronomy, chapter 8, verse 18, a message that was given to the people of Israel as they moved into the promised land. And the Bible says, "But remember the Lord your God, for it is he who gives you the ability to produce wealth, and so confirms the covenant which is so hard to your ancestors as it is today." It is God who gives the ability to produce wealth, to maintain it, to expand it, to grow it. And so let us continue praying for our economy in Uganda, and even our pockets, because we need money in our pockets, and we want to appreciate God for this institution, Bank of Uganda. Let us pray. Father God in heaven, we appreciate that we saw light of day come today after time of rest in the night. We started this day during our waking hours to think, to plan, to meditate, to do good, and we pray the Lord, as we gather here, you stand with us and we appreciate you for the work that the Bank of Uganda is doing as an institution, the mother institution in this nation, we pray that this engagement will produce fruit. And I know that as bank, they have purpose for which these interactions are taking place. We pray the Lord, you meet it, and so that when they sit down, they will say, yes, God has been good. Pray that you bless our day today, in the name of God the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
We may take our seats. Thank you very much, Papa Reverend. Once again, I take this opportunity to welcome you to this place, and more specifically to the engagements of Bank of Uganda, that we have shared to interact with us all. We have many people in our midst, but allow me first welcome the Director of Communications of Bank of Uganda, who is our host, to welcome us, so that we can continue knowing each other, as well as interacting when we know the reason we are here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Luke. Luke is the gentleman who has been speaking just before me. Deputy Governor, the district and city leadership, religious leaders present, media, CEOs representing other financial institution regulators here, management and colleagues at Bank of Uganda, ladies and gentlemen in all of your capacities, good morning to you all. Mulembi. We are very, very, very happy to see you here, we are extremely happy to see you here. On behalf of Bank of Uganda, I welcome you all today for this Bali Town Hall City Meeting. Thank you very, very, very much for honoring our invitation. We want to appreciate the Bali City Leadership for making sure that this town hall meeting was possible. We believe that today's interaction will be special, given that the Deputy Governor is here in person to share what we do at the bank. This regional town hall meeting is in line with the strategic plan of BOU, and mainly focuses on stakeholder engagement, where we intend to satisfy you, our stakeholders, to increase your confidence in Bank of Uganda, but also to transparently share what we do as a form of public accountability to you. So we hope that through this engagement, you will get to get, to receive information that you may not have had, or that you require clarification on concerning the work we do and the communities we serve. We also want to use this opportunity to hear from you, to get feedback. Sometimes information gets diluted as it's being transmitted, so this is an opportunity for us to get firsthand information from you. And so we request you to openly ask questions, give us your comments, give us advice as well on where we can do better. While the overall purpose of this town hall meeting is broad, we decided that today we want to emphasize Bank of Uganda's role in achieving socioeconomic transformation in Uganda, and the Deputy Governor will speak to that in his remarks. Let me say that at Bank of Uganda, we strongly believe that we have a very big role to support socioeconomic transformation, and that in pursuing this role, we require participation from all stakeholders, and of course, with effective communication on our policies and decisions. So this is one way to achieve that. It's therefore our hope that by the end of today's meeting, communication between us and you will have improved, your understanding of what we do at the Bank of Uganda, and appreciating the mandate, policies and actions will have increased by the end of the day, and that we'll get the feedback that we seek to serve you better. To contribute to today's discussions, we invited our partners. We have the Deposit Protection Fund, represented by the CEO here, who will be introduced formally. We have a representation from Uganda Bankers Association, they'll also be introduced. We have also participants from commercial banks, who will all participate in the question and answer session. I'd like to keep my remarks short and conclude by appreciating again Bali City Leadership for the mobilization process and agreeing to host us in this beautiful region. This is indeed an indication of the progressive partnership between Bank of Uganda and the leadership. I'd also like again to thank the Deputy Governor, senior management, and the entire Bank of Uganda team for making this engagement possible. And lastly, I'd like to thank all of you for making time to come and join us here. Muanyala Nabi, thank you very much.
I know Deputy Governor will translate for you later. Yes, thank you very much Kenneth for the opening remarks. Now that gives me comfort, because he has said what we are here for. He hinted at my name, I am Luke Herbert Rowandy, a staff of the bank, born and raised and grown and bathed, grown and bathed, and everything here in Bugisu. So I'm pure Bugisu. I was joking with him that every morning I come from the mountain to come and speak, so the language is still fresh. Allow me recognize the presence of our Deputy RDC, sorry Deputy RSC, we were with her yesterday. Oh, sorry Deputy RDC, not RSC, Deputy RDC from the district. Thank you very much for once again being with us on day two. Now... In our midst we have the RISO, Mr Kassawo Fek, if you are here please, thank you very much for joining us. We have the RPC, Senior Superintendent Okero Dickens, thank you for joining us. We have the Deputy District Cadi, my elder brother Higeni Ismael, and then we have the City CDO, Mai Anet Namwase, thank you for joining us. We have the District Production Officer, Mr Wanakina George Davidson, thank you for joining us. This is Bugisu, and in Bugisu we have our cultures, have our cultures and norms, and we have the representative of the Umukoka, or the Inziah Masawa, Papa Nimeyeho Kwabonemungaki. Yes. The Umukoka himself is not here, but he has sent the emissaries, so thank you for joining us. At the high table we have my sister Emiri Namalwa, the Deputy Mayor, Industrial Division City, thank you for joining us once again, she was with us yesterday, and she's still with us. And then we have the Deputy Mayor of the City, the other one was Industrial Division, of the City itself, but she's the mayor now, Mai Kahkai Harriet, thank you for joining us. And those of us who were here yesterday, we remember the RSC, who was with us, John Rex Achire, thank you for once again making time to join us. We have the representative of the area Member of Parliament, the area Member of Parliament is Mr Karim Masawa, Honorable Karim Masawa, sorry, but he's represented by Mr Muonge. Mr Muonge, thank you for joining us. DPF asked me to move to this side as the last tactic, I think they told me, but I will ask for the reason later. Allow me welcome Dr Julia Oyet, the ED, Deposit Protection Fund. And the remaining person, I will introduce when the time comes. So in the interest of time, allow me invite the Deputy Mayor, Mai Harriet Kahkai to come and address us and to open this session.
I thank you, our moderator, our Deputy Governor, Bank of Uganda, our staffs of Bank of Uganda, our microfinance banks who are here with us today, our RSC of Bali City, our Honorable Member of Parliament of Industrial Division, our worship, the Deputy Mayor of Industrial Division, our Deputy RDC of Bali District, the Deputy RSCs of Northern Division and Industrial Division, our religious leaders in your respective capacities, the technical staffs both Bali District and Bali City, our political leaders of the district and of Bali City, our participants of today, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kahkai Harriet, the Deputy Mayor of Bali City, and the incoming woman Member of Parliament 2026. Yeah. Allow me take this opportunity to welcome you to Bali City, and also take this opportunity to thank the Bank of Uganda for choosing Bali City as the priority for this day. I want to send the sincere regards from his worship, the Mayor of Bali City, who has not been able to be with us due to other busy... not been able to be with us due to other busy shadows, but nevertheless, he has sent you greetings, and he has said that whatever we're going to discuss here is a blessing to the development of Uganda and Bali City as a whole. I'm happy that today we are addressing issues which affects our people more especially concerning the economy of Uganda. Papa Deputy Governor, we as people of Bali City, Bali district, and Uganda as a whole, we have got a lot of challenges in the field of the banks, and this one, I will not state, I really want to represent my people every and put across the challenges which our staffs are facing in the field of the banks. One, I want to talk about the staffs. People have got loans within the microfinance banks, and of which, when I interact mostly with Jonah, he was telling me that most of the banks, Bank of Uganda, doesn't organize them. And to me, I was wondering, where do those smaller banks get permission to operate within our locality? One, we have Uganda Bankers Association, that is an association of the bankers within the small microfinances. And you get that you wake up in the morning, you've got a small loan, you get a code on your salary. They've put a code. And when that code is on your salary, in most cases, someone pays, finishes that loan, but at the end of the day, they don't remove the code. More people are suffering with that. Am I lying colleagues? We don't know where the codes come from, but you just see that is UBA, Uganda Bankers Association. And also want to know, who is that person responsible for that code? And if you're working in an organization, whom do they talk with minus a staff having permission to know that the code is on my salary? That one is one, the first challenge. I also have another challenge of money lenders. Most of the money lenders have mushroomed, they will rave everywhere, in this Bali state, in the district, and let me say, in the whole of this Uganda. The money lenders are charging 30% interest to our people. People are not having IDs. They have kept for them IDs, and as you know, ID is the property of Uganda. Perhaps you want to do something and release an ID. People don't have an ID because of poverty and because of the money lenders. We have these ones who are resembling, they're just the same, they are called, I don't know, something of the sort. There are very many that are punishing our people. Once they give them money, they even cane them. They move with sticks and they're caning them. So we want to know, the 30%, they charge our people, where are they getting permission to charge the 30% on money lending? Our people are suffering. Teachers are not teaching because of the loans. The loans are too high. We want to know so that from our deputy governor. On another side, I want to thank you for supporting our farmers. But one challenge is, our farmers, once they want to get a small loan in the field of agriculture, someone wants 1 million, that one, the procedures are too long. They cannot access that little money to help them run their agricultural businesses on the smallest scale. Instead, most of the banks want people who are applying for 10 million, 20 million, 30 million, that one, they work on them very fast. So I don't know if that one would be addressed. Then also our low, small income earners would also be able to access that loan for their agriculture. And then we also had a loan which was given to the business enterprises. That loan was given in the time of COVID, when people recovered from COVID. They had a small loan which was being given to them to sustain their businesses so that they are not able to close their businesses. So with that, I want to request to you, Deputy Governor, that since COVID has reduced, why can't we open up that small loan business so that you can give, it can be open to the public to also access that money to sustain the small enterprises within our city, our district so that people are able to also perhaps earn a living? So with those few remarks, I want to really appreciate you, our deputy governor, for coming to Bali City, Bali district, to address people on issues concerning the economy. So on that note, I want to wish everyone of us here a good deliberation. It's for God and my country.
Thank you very much for those wonderful remarks and for the hints towards the discussion. It's now time to introduce to you the remaining person, who is the deputy governor of Bank of Uganda, Mr. Michael Ating Ego. And therefore, I also take the honor to invite you to come and speak to us. Look, thank you, thank you very much. I was once told that when you're in Rome, you have to behave like the Romans. So that now I'm in Mbanale, I have to say, mulembe ba papa, ni ba mai. Okay? But let me first of all say, I am observing all the protocol as it was earlier mentioned, so I'm not going to go through it. And I really want to thank the deputy mayor, she Harriet. I think you have hit the nail on the head. And before I make my remarks, I just want to confirm that we have a representative of UBA here. Is Patricia here? Patricia? Oh, I'm glad you're around. You had the concerns raised by Harriet. And then there's a representative of Umr. I think I had breakfast with you. Are you here? Yes. So you need to answer the questions that have been raised by Harriet. And then of course, I have my own staff, who are going to talk to the issue of loans to agriculture and the small businesses. And I am aware that there are a number of commercial banks represented here. At least when I was living in Kampala yesterday, I talked to the MD of Centenary Bank, the regional manager and the branch manager. Can you confirm that you're here? Yes, and I have a number of other commercial banks that are represented in Bali. You've had the issues that have been raised by the mayor. So I'm going to ask you to respond to these issues because these are pertinent issues that are affecting the people. So deputy mayor, they are going to respond to these issues since they are the ones who deal with you. On that note, let me make my few remarks. First, on behalf of Bank of Uganda, I really, really want to thank the people of Mbanale, particularly the leaders and the residents of Mbanale and then Bugisu as a subregion, for the very, very warm welcome that you have given the participants to this meeting today, and more especially, the Bank of Uganda staff who have been interacting with you for some time now, and also for the welcome that you gave me and the delegation that came yesterday. So I really want to thank you for, particularly those who joined us yesterday and are still with us. It really shows the commitment that you have. You want to understand what is this central bank that we are talking about. Some of you are saying that it is so difficult to get to Bank of Uganda. That's why I have said, okay, fine, if it's difficult to come to Bank of Uganda, we are going to come to you. Right? So that's why we're here. And to understand the role of the Bank of Uganda, and also to discuss with you the approaches that you have in mind in as regards as fulfilling our mandate. We see that the town hall meetings are very, very vital in as far as Bank of Uganda is concerned, particularly in engaging with our stakeholders about the role of the central bank, its work, and its impact, and addressing all the queries that you have about Bank of Uganda and the activities that are engaging us and you. So we want to get your valuable feedback because sometimes we can be hanging in Kampala there, thinking that everything is okay, but we want to come to you and ask you, do you really feel the impact of Bank of Uganda? And how do you feel the impact of Bank of Uganda? You can feel the impact of Bank of Uganda if you know what Bank of Uganda is supposed to be doing. So that's why we're here, seeking a feedback from you. There was a lady sometime back, she's called, she was called Mary Therese Winfred Robinson. She was the first female president of the Republic of Ireland. She had these wise words, quote, "To make progress, we have to build a multi-stakeholder process, harnessing the appropriate energies." Those words are very, very powerful. So for us in Bank of Uganda, we believe that a multi-stakeholder solution, leveraging on diverse perspectives, and a collective energy of individuals and groups are very important in driving progress. That's why we're here, to interact with you. You are our stakeholders. You are the public that we are supposed to serve. We exist to serve the people of Uganda. So want to hear, what do the people of Uganda think about us? So please be very, very candid to us. Tell us exactly where we want, where we should do right, where we should do better, once we have explained to you what our mandate is. Do you see any shortcomings? We therefore feel that your questions, your comments, your opinions are very, very essential in improving our performance in serving all the Ugandans. And so, we are here, very, very eager to engage in an open and a candid discussion about Bank of Uganda with the people of Mbanale and Bugisu subregion today. Also, there was another gentleman who was called James Queen, an American Public Administration Authority, who once said, quote, "Agencies differ in two main respects. Can the activities of their operators be observed? Can you observe our activities? And can the results of those activities be observed?" So are you seeing our results? Or we are just talking to ourselves? When we see inflation has come down to 2.4% for headline, 2% for core, are you asking yourself, these guys, what are they smoking? Don't they know that prices are going up? So let's have a discussion on this today. So at the Bank of Uganda, we approach these questions with transparency and accountability as we carry our mandate. Transparently communicating as a central bank governance, policies, outcomes, and official relations, it fosters clarity, it does reduce uncertainty, and improves policy outcomes. We want you to be certain. We don't want you to keep second guessing us, that those guys, you know, they're there in their suits and their ties, they don't know what we are going through. And that's why we've come today to you, really, as ordinary people, dressed in our t-shirts, trying to identify with you, so that you are free to talk to us without any fear or any favor. So we believe that this approach aims to secure public support, preserve operational independence, and enhance policy effectiveness. Once we have this kind of discussion, this is what is going to generate this. So of course, we do recognize that central banking dependence hinges on transparency, because if you are independent, you have to be transparent. You have to be transparent. Otherwise, your independence will be called into question. So we need to emphasize the importance of ensuring public understanding of our policies and actions. So the public must understand what our policies are, what our actions are, what do we do? Why do we pursue the policies that we pursue? You need to understand us so that if you are going to judge us, you judge us from that aspect there. So we are pleased to note that Bank of Uganda, again, this one, I mean, I have to say it, Bank of Uganda stands out among the select central banks in the world that have been reviewed under the new Central Bank Transparency Code by the International Monetary Fund. At the time when Bank of Uganda was undertaking this review, we were the seventh central bank in the whole world. There were about 168 or so central banks, but we were the seventh to undertake transparency. So what does this mean? It means that the IMF findings praise the Bank of Uganda's communication policy and strategy, recognizing our commitment to transparent communication and active public engagement. And that's why we're here. We are engaging the public. We want to find out from you, what can we do better? That is the aspect of transparency. We don't fear to be criticized. If you see that Bank of Uganda is not doing what is right, tell us, and then we can have a dialogue. This is not a monologue. I'm not preaching to you. We are here to listen to you. We are presenting our side of the story. We want to hear from you, where could we have done better? Do you think that inflation is too low? Do you think that money is so tight? Do you think that we should print more money? Let's have a discussion so that we get to, we tell you the pros and the cons of each of these. So briefly, let me provide an overview of the Bank of Uganda's work, just to set the stage for the open discussion. Our mission centers on ensuring price stability. That's the first and the foremost thing, price stability, and a robust financial system that aligns with Uganda's socioeconomic transformation as aligned or as outlined in Vision 2014. Initially, prior to 2022, our mission statement used to read, "To promote price stability and a sound financial sector." But last year, when we were revising our strategic plan, because it's a five-year plan, so the last five years ended in 2022. So now we are in the next strategic plan, running from 2022 to 2027. We ask ourselves the question, to promote price stability and a sound financial sector, so what? This is a question we ask ourselves. How can we become more relevant to the people? What is the government agenda? What is the government agenda in terms of development? What is the narrative right now? The narrative right now is socioeconomic transformation. So we need to be speaking to the people. So we therefore amended our mission statement to read, "To support or to promote price stability and support a sound financial sector in support of socioeconomic transformation." So most of the initiatives that we are undertaking in the five years starting from 2022 are really in support of socioeconomic transformation. Bank of Uganda on its own cannot achieve socioeconomic transformation. So we are playing our role. That's why we're using the word in support. So this what we can contribute towards supporting socioeconomic transformation and that's what we are going to be discussing with you earlier, I mean, later on, and we want to hear from you. Do you think we're doing the right thing? So fundamentally, our mission resembles a three-legged stool that is supported by key pillars, that is to ensure price stability, overseeing the safety and the soundness of the financial institutions and of course managing the payment system. Now, the payment system is very, very critical, particularly when it comes to socioeconomic transformation, as we shall see later on. So a core responsibility is to uphold and enhance the stability of the Uganda shilling value. We strive to protect the purchasing power of money, aiming for consistency in the prices of vital commodities such as maize meal or old school fees. I think you, you all remember that last year, we were faced with serious challenges of inflation. We were coming from COVID-19 in 2021. So as we were reopening the economy, you recall that in early January, the president announced that we are going to open the schools. So when schools were opened, but because the economy had been locked down, most of the factories that were producing scholastic materials had also been locked down. Now, the announcement that we are opening schools meant that the demand for scholastic materials kind of like shut up, but the supply of scholastic materials did not respond as fast. So what happened? The price of scholastic materials and other educational related activities kind of like went because the demand was outstripping supply. So we saw a slight increase in inflation as a result of the education services sector. But that was contained. Inflation went to about 2.7 overall in January last year. And then of course, you know, when one country woke up one morning and decided to invade their neighbors, it had a ripple effect the rest of the economy. The prices of fuel went up, the prices of soap went up, prices of wheat went up, all the oil-related products went up. So we began to see inflation. A bar of soap reached about 12,000 shillings from, from, from about 3,000. We saw the price of fuel products, take for example, super petrol rise from about 3,800 per liter in February, closing to nearly 6,700 shillings by the time we were in August. And we were not helped by the fact that we had an extended drought last year. You all remember that the drought last year was extended. Food crop inflation went up. So as a result, the entire inflationary environment picked up. So inflation that was at 2.7% in January 2022 hit 10.7% in October 2022. And there were cries from the public that something needs to be done, but that was the responsibility of the central bank. So we, we did whatever it took to ensure that this inflation does not continue rising because if inflation were to rise and it becomes entrenched, it becomes difficult to bring it down, it becomes more expensive and it takes a much longer time to bring it down. So the central bank had to act very, very fast. And that's why today we are able to have inflation of 2.4% of headline and 2% core. By core, I mean you strip off food crop prices, you strip off things like fuel and energy because those are volatile, they are not in our control, but the ones that are in our control, we brought it down to 2%. Our target is 5%. So when we talk about preserving the value of the Uganda shilling, we are trying to preserve the value of the Uganda shilling by making sure that inflation does not erode the value, your purchasing power. By saying that inflation has come down to 2%, it doesn't mean to say that prices have come down. Yes, some prices have come down, but on average, the rate at which prices are increasing has slowed down from 10.7% last year. They are now only increasing on average by 2%. It is our target that inflation increases by 5% per annum in order to encourage businesses. Also, another aspect of preserving the value of the shilling is by making sure that the exchange rate is stable. We've had challenges with the exchange rate. It is difficult to get external financing. We've had so many shocks which I cannot get into, but overall, the Ugandan exchange rate has been fairly stable. You need to look around the neighborhoods and see what's happened to the exchange rate in the neighborhoods and then maybe you will appreciate why we are saying that our exchange rate is a bit stable. So when you talk about enhancing price stability to ensure the value of the Uganda shilling is preserved, this is exactly what we are talking about. So price stability enables individuals to plan and to sustain their living standards. There's no point of you waking up today that a meal of kaunga and beans is five financial links today, the following month is 10,000, the other day is 40,000. It becomes difficult for you to plan, particularly when your salary is not rising, is not increasing. It means that the purchasing power of your available income is being eroded by the rising prices. It means that you're eating less and less because inflation is coming, you know, is going up. So we are here to ensure that price stability ensures that individual plans are maintained and people sustain their living standards. And of course, also we oversee the licensing and regulations of the supervised financial institutions and these increase include commercial banks, credit institutions and micro depositing institutions. We have to ensure their safe operations. We have to ensure that they foster customer trust and this is why the deputy mayor Harriet was raising this issue. Customer trust are the issue that she raised, are those issues building customer trust. So that's where we have, we are going to have a discussion and that these financial institutions also uphold ethical business standards. So we aim to, to, to curb financial crimes, enforce consumer protection, encourage the treatment of customers by the financial institutions in a fair way, in a fair way. So that once you make a deposit, you are able to go and withdraw that deposit. Once you get a loan and you are paying according to schedule, nobody is grabbing your land title. Once you are in the bank, you don't have to spend a long time queuing in the bank. So we are saying that we want to encourage fair treatment of customers by the financial sector. You are not getting fair treatment from the financial institutions. I think this is an attempt to raise it because we have here commercial banks, microfinance institutions represented and they will explain to you why this is the case. Now, the Bank of Uganda supervises the banking sector, ensuring that only adequately capitalized and professionally moneyed banks obtain and sustain operating licenses. It would be very, very unfortunate for you if you woke up this morning and you walk to your branch expecting to make a withdrawal and then you find a very big placard there written closed. How do you like that? It is not good. So what Bank of Uganda does is to ensure that you don't find the placard closed. You need to go and find those doors open. And it takes a lot of work by Bank of Uganda and the supervised financial institutions to ensure that, that those doors are open every day and that you're able to conduct your business on a daily basis. In instances of failure, we prioritize safeguarding deposit funds and stability of other financial entities. Our commitment lies in enhancing the management of failed financial institutions for accountability and to protect the interests of all stakeholders. Today, we are honored here to have the ED of the Deposits Protection Fund. The ED of the Deposits Protection Fund is dealing with those institutions that have been moved from ICU. And are they headed for the mortuary? I don't know. You will tell us. So how do you deal with those ED, with those institutions that have been enrolled to the mortuary, particularly if they owe people some money? All right. So, so in other words, the Bank of Uganda is responsible for ensuring the safety and the stability of the country's payment system, including the growing reliance on mobile money transactions. I think colleagues, you all agree with me that mobile money transactions are growing by leaps and bounds. Who of you doesn't have a mobile money account? I think you, you all have mobile money accounts, okay? And that has grown by leaps and bounds. So the surge in mobile money usage notably started during the COVID-19 pandemic but has expanded in terms of financial access and more people countrywide have now embraced it. However, we want to stress the importance of the use of caution due to associated risks like fraud and cyber threats. There are people out there who are not sleeping. As you sleep, they are thinking, how can I hack into your mobile money account? How can I pretend to be you and go and get your money? So we have enhanced what we call literacy outreachers to educate people on how they can protect their mobile money. You see, there's a saying that a chain is only as strong as the weakest link. We can do all the financial literacy on cyber fraud and what to do, but if you keep on giving your PIN to your son who's in high school, who loves money, you give your PIN to your son, that money is gonna be swept from your phone. So in other words, we encourage all of you to be part and parcel of the fight against cyber fraud by you playing your own part, keeping your phone very diligently, keeping your PIN, not sharing your PIN, not writing it down anywhere where it can be seen, right? And trying to learn more of yourself, how to further protect your resources. It doesn't take you just to, to learn more. I think we are trying to, to go, to use all the available languages in Uganda to address the issue of cyber fraud. So try to listen to those programs to see how you can secure your own finances. And in that way, we are all making the system stronger and safer. So we are actively promoting digital financial literacy and the aim is to shield users from IT and cybersecurity risk. We urge collaboration amongst stakeholders to mitigate IT threats and cybersecurity risks, enhancing the resilience and effectiveness of electronic financial services. Because we believe that secure and efficient electronic financial services allows us to decrease the dependence on fiscal currency notes and coins, which entail substantial production, transportation and security costs. So for example, if I sent you money in your wallet, you've gotten 100,000 or maybe 200,000 and you are going to Nakaloke market. It is a market day in Nakaloke and you want to buy a bunch of matoke. It is almost Christmas, you want to buy a bunch of matoke. You want to buy a chicken, you want to buy tomatoes and the guy who's selling, this is a fine, your bill is 100,000. I think the first question you should ask this guy is, do you have mobile money? If he says yes, ask him, can I transfer it to you? I don't think he'll refuse. So if you transfer that mobile money to that person sending it, he will accept, all right? And if you have about six or seven customers doing the same thing, this guy who's selling matoke and chicken might be having a child who's going to senior two in Nabumali High School, all right? So the first thing he asks the headmaster, how much is the fees? The headmaster says, oh, because of the increased cost of being business, we've raised the school fees from 400 to 500,000. I think you also should ask the headmaster, do you have mobile money where I can send the money? I'm sure that school has got mobile money account. Then you transfer it. So if we all did that, shall we need cash? Shall we need cash? No, we will not need cash. And the cost of printing cash is very, very expensive, very expensive. So that means Bank of Uganda will reduce on the amount of money that it's using on printing cash and it could save more money. Then we can have a discussion that we last opened Nakaloke Health Force Centre three years ago. So maybe we should now think of another health centre since we have saved money. So the discussion is, which health centre now in Bali? That's for the leadership now to tell us. So if the leadership and the people of Bugisu subregion agree that you are going to increase on the use of mobile money, you don't cash it out, the moment you get 100,000, you don't run to an agent that give me 100,000, you keep it in your wallet and you, you know, you keep on making your payments. It will save us the cost of printing cash and also these thieves, all right, will not be able to waylay you, asking for cash. Okay, so there are advantages of not cashing out your mobile money and that is our appeal to the people of Mbari and the Bugisu region that don't cash out mobile money once you receive it. Try to make payments. I know that there's an issue of costs and everything. We are going to have a discussion on those costs. I have here somebody who will tell us what we are doing in order to reduce the cost of that, but it's really our plea that you don't cash out once you get mobile money. And then, of course, Bank of Uganda also has authority, even as I talk about mobile money, we also have the authority to issue the national currency, the notes and the coins that you are holding. It's Bank of Uganda that has been given the mandate to do it and the Bank of Uganda upholds what we call a clean note policy and it does ensure widespread access to money. Now, you've heard of the Mbari currency branch, there's a Gulu currency branch, ginger currency branch, Arua, you know, there are many currency branches. So the purpose of these currency branches is to process cash because some, some of the cash that comes from the public, all right, is not free to go back into circulation. So they, they identify which one should be canceled, which one should be reissued. They also help in distributing the newly printed currency notes. So it is the aim of Bank of Uganda that once you get cash from Bank of Uganda, it should be it should be clean money. Because we all like clean money. You don't like to have middle-aged money. You've been to the market to buy sabolea. And sometimes you are given a balance of one thousand. You ask yourself, "Should I or shouldn't I take it?" Because the thing is not looking very nice. Right? Sometimes you even think, "Okay, if I take it, I need to go and wash my hands because I don't know how many people have taken this money." So we don't want that kind of situation. We want to ensure that the money that you are holding out there is clean. So one of the reasons why we have branches around is to process that currency, to ensure that whatever comes out into circulation is clean. And now you might wonder, "But how come that there's a lot of dirty money in the public?" It's because you have not gone to deposit it in a bank. Because once you deposit money in the bank, it's then the bank that brings that money to Bank of Uganda for processing and for cancellation. So we encourage you to keep depositing such dirty money so that it's cancelled and new currency is issued. But of course also, you have to handle the money with care. There is this idea these days, I don't know what the people want to show how rich they are. I am going to, I get this nice-looking girl and I'm going for Kwanjula. So I get a flower boutique. I wrap their fifty thousand shilling notes, fold them round, and then I go and hand the boutique, I think to impress, isn't it? But by so doing, you are destroying the currency. Success cards, you know, kids are sitting PLE. Then you wrap this money round, you know. What are you doing? Are you impressing? You know, it's, I think we need to get off this behaviour because it destroys the life, it shortens the life of the currency. And that imposes high costs for us. So there are better ways that we can use our money than if you want to impress your girlfriend, wait, wrap round money, just give her the cash. You know? So, again, we are living in an ever-changing environment. Our mission therefore now expands beyond macroeconomic stability to focus on tangible impacts on our actions on people's lives and livelihoods. And that's why we have added in our statement, "Supporting socio-economic transformation." So, we are working to incorporate environmental, social, and governance principles and sustainability within our framework. Colleagues, seventy percent of our population lives in the rural areas. And the bulk of this population is engaged in agriculture. And that agriculture is rain-fed. And you all know what's happening to rain patterns these days. So it means that the vulnerability of the bulk of our population is becoming higher by the day. We need to ensure, we need to conserve our environment. And that's why Bank of Uganda, in part of supporting socio-economic transformation, we are focusing so much on environmental, social, and governance. And we're using very, very simple messages on governance. We are telling commercial banks that, "You know what? We know why you exist. You exist to make profits. But even as you make the profits, you need to be mindful of the people. You need to be mindful of the planet in which you're operating." Financial sector's sustainability can only be so if the environment in which you are operating is sustainable. So that's the narrative that we are trying to change. So we're trying to institutionalize environment, social, and governance into the supervised financial institutions. We are saying that gonna be the days when you are only making profits for your shareholders, when you are creating value for your shareholders, we are now discussing how do we create value for the stakeholders? The stakeholders include those people at the bottom of the pyramid, those mambogas. You know, you go to Nakaloke Market, those ladies who are selling tomatoes, who are selling Sukumawiki, whatever you, how do you bring them on board? How do you ensure that in producing that mbuga and producing that matoke, that the environment under which they are producing it is secure? So we're having a conversation with the financial institutions to try to see how we can secure the environment. So, we have prioritized integrating ESG, environmental, social, and governance principles and sustainability into the financial sector by focusing first of all on raising awareness among financial institutions, establishing robust climate risk policy, and pursuing and promoting sustainability certification. So they are very simple things that we're doing. For example, we want to find out from the commercial banks that in lending, how much money did you lend for things like solar panels, agroforestation, producing more energy-saving stops, charcoal stops? Because the ordinary stuff, if you take one month to consume one bag of charcoal, suppose you finance energy-saving stuff, maybe one bag of charcoal can go for three months, those kinds of things. What kind of investments are you putting in place? How are you empowering the youth and the women to produce climate-friendly products? Right? Right now, you have the oil and the gas. This is a hot potato. Everybody wants to learn to oil and gas. But oil and gas in the Albertan region is emitting significant amount of carbon in the atmosphere. And that is going to affect your climate going forward. But remember, this oil and gas is with us for about twenty, twenty-five years and is finished. But the environment will still remain with us. So how do we ensure that even us financial institutions are financing oil and gas, we do not destroy the environment that we are going to rely on? So the conversation is that in as much as you're lending this amount of money to oil and gas, let us see how much you are lending to absorb the carbon that is being injected by the lending. So this is the conversation that we are going to have with them so that we do not destroy our environment at the expense of a resource that is going to be exhausted in a few years' time. But of course, we cannot leave the resource underground. We need to extract that resource for the purpose of propelling our development. And therefore, it means that we need to extract that resource in a manner that preserves our environment. And I think this is what the government is doing, ensuring that the production of oil does not destroy the environment. And therefore, we're encouraging all the financial institutions to do the same, that as you lend, don't destroy the environment. So, and of course, we are also developing guidelines together with the banks to seamlessly and safely embed ESG principle and sustainability into their own operations. So I want to believe that we are advocating for establishment of ESG and sustainability principles within banks, emphasizing the need for collaborative efforts among stakeholders. So even you, the borrowers, you need to be asking yourself that the amount of money I'm borrowing from a bank for the project I want to finance, is it environmentally friendly? Am I going to grow trees? What investment am I going to undertake so that I don't destroy the environment? Because it takes two to tangle. You don't expect only the commercial banks to be doing this. But even we as the public, we need to be mindful of our environment if we have to ensure that we do not risk losing our agricultural potential. So, together, we aim to innovate and devise new strategies to uplift the marginalized communities, bolster industries, and establish policies that are going to promote value creation, particularly among these people at the bottom of the pyramid, so that we are uplifted. And by so doing here, we are talking about financial inclusion. You know, in the olden days, if you didn't have a land title, there was no way you'd get funding from a commercial bank. But thank God, that now we have fintechs. You have the likes of Momo. You have Amssul, A-M-C-U-L, this Airtel. All these applications, they are coming with micro savings, micro loans, micro insurance. And they are targeting the bottom of the pyramid. How many of you have received a loan from Momo or from Airtel? A small loan, could be a day or two or a month. Has any of you got a loan? Do you have any savings with them? So these fintechs have been able to reach the bottom of the pyramid. So now, our next step is that if you have these mobile money accounts and you're not cashing out, you are creating a record of how you spend your money. "Today, I got my money. I went and bought a fertilizer. I went and bought seeds. I went and bought this. I sold my pigs. I got this money here. I sold my chicken. I got my money here. I sold my matoke. I got my money." If it's all on mobile, you are creating a track record of how you use your money. Now, next time you want a loan, you will just tell this company, "Look, this is how I spend my money." You have a track record of how you spend your money. And believe you believe me, they will lend you money based on how you spent your money if you have been doing it on mobile phone. But if you are this guy who gets money, next time you're in a pork joint, you're in a bar, you are here, you are here, and you're using that, there's no way that you're gonna get money. Nobody's gonna lend you money. Right? So what I'm encouraging you to do is you can empower yourselves by borrowing more money to grow your businesses if you have that track record. You no longer need a collateral, that land title and whatever you. Once you have records, once you have records, particularly traceable records such as in this mobile money, you stand a very high chance of borrowing more money to grow your businesses. So that is how we are going to support the mambogas. Have received a loan from Momo or from Airtel? A small loan, could be a day or two or a month. Has any of you got a loan? Do you have any savings with them? So these fintechs have been able to reach the bottom of the pyramid. So now, our next step is that if you have these mobile money accounts and you're not cashing out, you are creating a record of how you spend your money. "Today, I got my money. I went and bought a fertilizer. I went and bought seeds. I went and bought this. I sold my pigs. I got this money here. I sold my chicken. I got my money here. I sold my matoke. I got my money." If it's all on mobile, you are creating a track record of how you use your money. Now, next time you want a loan, you will just tell this company, "Look, this is how I spend my money." You have a track record of... Forty million, asked for by seventy farmers. How much each is each million?
So, this value addition has a remarkable impact in this country. Has made significant impact on the community. It means that the people there now wouldn't be able to feed rare vegetables, rare animals, rare breeds and not to do that. Right? And the value in society increases. So this is a very important point. And that's why we are encouraging the leaders to do this. To talk to everyone and take this lesson in that any challenge is to be less about discussion than this challenge is. So that the people now are going to be able to do it. I was in a process one or two approaches. You are taking this lesson for people's need for that. You see, the need for that when I just came to the university, I was pursuing at the most one time a week a day, breakfast, because it was a bachelor, you have tea for lunch. And then I came to my place. I had my food, had my water. I bet that I was feeling very needy. But since then, the income has increased. I'm more of a human. This is me. This would mean that I have increased my consumption of food. No, in many things, the doctors are saying, you may have taken more application based on your health. But if you had a variety to make, do you want to get, when you have variety to make? They don't get yogurt, they don't get cheese. We've got so many products. And the people will go consume cheese. Yogurt, the meat, I don't know. Right? Have you ever had any of the in-serve? Getting that yogurt cheese? I was seeing like once in a while, they had a system. I bet this-
I had a disease, can buy cheese. They can buy yogurt. They can buy ice cream. These are things which are not consumed by the ordinary people. So value addition tends to produce those products whose consumption increases with higher incomes. And therefore, that means that you can target the local market. You can target the what? The exports. So that's why we are advocating for increased production, for value addition in order to target export market. And besides, you include the shelf life. So I am encouraging you to take up ACF loans for increased agricultural production and for agro processing, so that we support the vision of the country of value addition and we get more exports and more incomes. Likewise, for the SBRF, this SBRF was set to help those farms, micro, small, medium enterprises that were badly hit by COVID and they cannot recover. I was looking at an application. There was a lady who whose saloon had been affected because of the lockdown. So her business was not thriving. She came to ask for a loan. She wanted to buy these things. What do you call the, you know, these things, the balloons you put on the on the hair? Uh-uh, no, no, there's a glass thing. I don't know the hairdresser. Me, I call them balloons, you know, something that you put there. So she wanted to buy those things to revive her business. And indeed, she did, right? So right now, our strategy in the bank is to increase the uptake of this. Now, um, so given the agricultural dominance of the Bugisu subregion and Mbale city, the Bank of Uganda is urging the Mbale leaders to champion agricultural modernization and value addition projects. This transformation, in our view, will uplift the communities from subsistence farming to a thriving commercial economy. This is what we call socioeconomic transformation. So we encourage the Mbale agricultural stakeholders to utilize ACF and SBRF to finance value adding projects. The block allocation that I talked about, arrangement under the ACF, caters for those small farmers who have no collateral. And it accepts things like the movable property, inventories, and even credit history that we talked about. So we administer these two funds and demonstrates our commitment to fostering agricultural and small businesses. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I want to end by making a plea that addressing climate change is crucial, particularly in the Bank of Uganda's role. Climate change like altered rainfalls, flooding, rising temperatures, they significantly impact Uganda's agriculture, water resources, and public health. The vulnerability of the Bugisu subregion reliant on agriculture is evident through the recurring landslides in Bududa, severely affecting the livelihoods, lives, and the limb. It's also a threat to food security, price shocks, and welfare due to climate change. These are all pressing issues. We therefore call for action, very, very immediate action by the district leadership. This is needed. It was needed yesterday. Supporting initiatives such as reforestation, developing drought resistant crops, and enhancing water management practices is essential to mitigate and adapt these impacts. Now, for us on Bank of Uganda, we are advancing ESG and through our corporate social responsibility, initiatives to offer accessible and high quality healthcare- in November 2020. And this agenda was advanced in that context. This commitment aligns with the vital role of healthcare services as a cornerstone to the national socioeconomic transformation. So let me pause here to highlight the Bank of Uganda's emphasis on multi-stakeholder engagement, which echoes the words I said earlier on of Mary Theresa Winfred Robinson, "Believe in collective problem solving, the public recent challenges in accessing government transformative parish development model funds from financial institutions." These demand immediate actions because we understand that people have been queuing, some have been sleeping on the streets to access these funds. So these demand actions and maybe we'll hear from the financial institutions here what needs to be done. So reports of excessive queues forcing beneficiaries to sleep on the streets and exposing them to theft are alarming. We therefore urge commercial banks to bolster their capacity to guarantee timely and dignified access to financial services with more staff and using mobile money and IT platforms. For example, the Post Bank came with a platform called Wendy to disbar the PDM funds. Now, I want to end here and I want to turn now to the questions and the answer session. I've talked a lot, I've given so many examples. So I want all of you to feel free to ask us anything about Bank of Uganda and our mandate. And I want to thank you for your very, very kind attention and patience to my long presentation. And may God bless all of you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Deputy Governor. In the English we use here, we say that is the English here in Bugisu. So we shall be turning to the question and answer session very shortly. But allow me recognize our midist, the Member of Parliament for Bungokon North, Honorable Dr. John Faith Magoro, who joined us. Honorable, thank you for joining us for this session. In our midists, we also have the Speaker of Mbale City, Honorable N'Gwene Maria. We have the Deputy RSC Mbale City, Northern Division, Mr. Welye Yagane. We have the Representative of the Woman Member of Parliament of Mbale District, Mr. Fumana. Thank you for joining us. And then the District Commercial Officer Mbale, Mr. Madame Bunoti Irene Shimiyu. Thank you for joining us. The District Planner, Mr. Magumu Abdallah. Thank you for joining us. The DISO Mbale District, Mr. Carlo Godfrey. Thank you for joining us. Yes, I think that's it for our leaders. And in our midist, we have Centenary Bank representatives. If you're here, please raise up. Thank you. At least I, from yesterday, he's the area manager for Centenary Bank here in Mbale. We have DFCU. Thank you. We have Housing Finance Bank. We have Finance Trust Bank. Thank you. We have Diamond Trust Bank, DTB. Thank you for joining us. We have Stanbik Bank. Ah, thank you. We have Post Bank. Yes, Post Bank has been with us since yesterday. We have Bank of Africa. Bank of Africa. Okay, they are still in Africa, they will come to Mbale data. We have KCB Bank. KCB is there. And we have Pride Microfinance. Oh, thank you for joining us. We have Yuga Ford. Thank you. Moses, come and collect for me this one. The heart rating went to the doctors. This one here. Oh, this is Dark Hill. Dark Hill. Thank you for joining us. You know, in security circles, we have DISO resources, the sources are so many. So we have the CISO. CISO, City Internal Security Officer, Madame Chirangat Dorothy. Thank you for joining us. Oh, we have the RDC Mbale. My Asmin Naske. Thank you for joining us. Okay. We are going into the question and answer session. But the Deputy Governor whispered to me that the weather has changed, so I think we need a little bit of warmth. So he has prepared a cup of tea. But we shall use the next ten minutes. Okay, we shall pick it and have a working tea here. Okay? Yes, so somebody will come to you, raise you up, wait until that person comes. Go pick a cup of tea, come, and we continue with the session, with the questions. So I want to request my team, please take your positions and let's do this as fast as possible. If you can, take the high table first as we continue with the questions. I also want to appeal to you that in your in the documents you found on the table, on the chair, there are registration forms. Please kindly fill them and then we shall, somebody will call one of our Ashas to come and collect it for your, for our records. Okay. When my boss says this is the right thing, I will do the right thing. Deputy Governor has asked me to give you ten minutes. Pick a cup of tea, we settle, and continue with the questions. Okay? Let's move. As we go for tea, I want to recognize the presence of the Town Clerk Mbale City, Madame Lona Harono. Thank you so much for joining us. The tea quite quickly, but- Jay, you can give me some small interlude as we just clean up a few things.
... announces a policy interest rate called Central Bank Rate to clearly signal the monetary policy stance going forward in line with the bank mission to foster price stability and a sound financial system.
The Bank of Uganda will raise the CBR rate by one point five percent, forty point five percent immediately.
The bank pursues this mission through formulating policies that have helped to mitigate systemic risk to the Ugandan financial system, issuing currency, protecting the financial sector from potential financial shocks and risks through consistent surveillance, ensuring a sound financial sector by supervising and regulating financial institutions, overseeing the foreign exchange sector, promoting a sound economy through advising government on the financial sector, serving as a bank for commercial banks-
Jay, you can give me some small interlude as we just clean up a few things.
And on the fifteenth of August 2016, Bank of Uganda made fifty years- to clearly signal the monetary policy stance going forward in line with the bank mission to foster price stability and a sound financial system.
Members, I want to request that we remain seated. We remain, let's remain seated until an Asha reaches you. That's when we go to the queue. I don't want you to make, I don't want to make you stand for too long while just picking a cup of tea. So let's remain seated. Somebody will come and pick you off the chair where you are for the tea. That is if they have assessed the situation behind there. Thank you.
... by supervising and regulating financial institutions, overseeing the foreign exchange sector, promoting a sound economy through advising government on the financial sector, serving as a bank for commercial banks-
Jay, you can give me some small interlude as we just clean up a few things.
And on the fifteenth of August 2016, Bank of Uganda made fifty years- to clearly signal the monetary policy stance going forward in line with the bank mission to foster price stability- Bank of Uganda succeeded in delivering on its mandate to build, maintain, and develop Uganda's financial sector.
The economy is running normally. There's a bit of inflation from time to time, but it's under control.
This documentary highlights the fifty year Bank of Uganda journey. Bank of Uganda was officially inaugurated on the fifteenth of August, 1966. They aborted efforts to set up an East African central bank.
An official of the De La Rue Company intentionally linked to me as the Secretary of the Ugandan Task Force that I have already struck a deal to have the contract for Bank of Tanzania. So I took a queue and telephoned to Frank Kalimuro, who was the Secretary at the Cabinet. I narrated to him what I had heard. Our task force was asked to do two things. To continue attending the preparatory committee work. At the same time, quietly prepare work for the committee which was now being formed now for Bank of Uganda establishment. So side by side arrangements were being made to ask Bank of England to send officials to come quietly to work within Uganda.
In November 1965, Mr. Lewis arrived with the responsibility of drafting the Bank of Uganda legislation, recruiting and training staff, modifying Liverpool House to suit currency center needs, and arranging for shipping and storage of the new currency. He was joined by Mr. Anthony Parker, who became the country's first exchange manager, and George Palmer Lambe, who assumed the role of general manager. The three played an instrumental role in setting up the bank's internal...
...then were trying to push that with independence coming, there was no need to continue bringing colonists to those top positions. That was the political thinking then.
A seminarian from a highly religious family who initially studied philosophy with the intentions of becoming a priest, Joseph Mubiru had first worked as a bank clerk before going to India for further studies. Mubiru was appointed Assistant Secretary to the committee that formed Africa Development Bank. He completed the task and returned to Uganda where he got appointed as head of the newly-founded Uganda Credit and Savings Bank that later became Uganda Commercial Bank. He took time off his busy schedule at UCB to chair the committee that drafted the bank statute. As the institution charged with issuing and protecting the country's national currency, Bank of Uganda set off with the task of converting the existing East...
The rupee used to work side by side with the gold shares. But the rupee became so popular, and that's why in Uganda, euro was like rupee ya. Now, however, the rupee became so confounded. The imperial British East African company, Ibecom, came up with an East African rupee. In 1966, the month of August, we had the first Bank of Uganda series, which is placed here.
One East African coin was exchanged at an equal rate of one Uganda shilling. The currency notes were five, 10, 20, 50, and 100 shillings, as well as coins. Hardly a year into its establishment, the bank found itself faced with the challenge of devaluation of the pound.
The pound had been devalued. On Monday, after the announcement...
On Monday 18th of November 1967, the British government announced its intention to devalue the pound sterling. Devaluation of the pound had serious implications on Uganda, considering the country's reserves were in pounds. However, for a constitutionalizing body, Bank of Uganda, together with the other two East African countries, including Kenya and Tanzania, ably rose to the challenge. The nurturing institution was put to yet another test following President Milton Obote's Nachivuwa Declaration.
The owners of this company have in the main no stake in this country. And therefore, the profits that are made by such companies are usually repatriated to various countries in the world.
It caused shock waves in the economy. That moved to the west, to the east said government was taking over 60% of the shares of those private sector companies, and that included the commercial banks.
This development also served to make Obote's government unpopular, another problem for Bank of Uganda in terms of aid mobilization and international networking.
Uganda is ours.
It will be in this building that the contribution of the Bank of Uganda to the exciting endeavors of the years to come will be made.
Despite the economic constraints and political upheavals, Bank of Uganda managed to complete construction of its permanent home along Kampala Road, where the bank is housed today. The bank soon fell victim to the political crisis when in March 1970, Governor Mubiru was placed under house arrest on allegations of being part of the team that organized President Obote's attempted assassination in December 1969 during a UPC delegates conference. There was no evidence connecting him to the assassination, and he returned to his office on the 23rd of March. He managed to keep Obote off his back for about a year until his government was overthrown by Idi Amin in a military coup on the 25th of January 1971. In October 1972, a year after he had left Bank of Uganda, Mubiru was picked from his Impala House offices along Kemathi Avenue and was whisked away, never to be seen again. Mubiru left a big gap for Bank of Uganda and the banking industry the world over. But the roots he planted live long after him. It is in recognition of this very important contribution that in 1988, Bank of Uganda introduced the Joseph Mubiru Memorial Lecture. The lecture is held annually, discussing economic-financial topics by leading personalities in the financial sector. Chiinji Semianu replaced Governor Mubiru. In spite of stepping into big shoes, his experience and training qualified him. He, however, joined the bank when the country was economically strained and the country's exports had declined by 9%, while imports had risen by 20%. This economic strain was further compounded by the global monetary crisis, which saw America's President Nixon delink the United States dollar from gold. This constrained the bleeding economy further, considering three years earlier, Uganda had transferred a sizable percentage of her reserve to the dollar. Making matters worse for Chiinji's term of office, on the 8th of August 1972, hardly a year into his governorship, President Amin expelled Asians and other foreigners deemed to be exploiting Uganda's economy.
One evening, Amin was in Morocco, and he said he had received...
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I want to request that those of us who have picked a cup of tea or taken a cup of tea, we return and we continue with the program as we allow other members to do the same.
He was in the bank, and you give out of that, you give them equivalent of 1,000 shillings. Probably the challenge we had was because we had to get many other people from other government departments and ministries to assist us. Because you would have a queue lining from the front of the bank down to KPC or long, long queues. There were many.
We have won. We have won.
Amin's decree seems to have been a populist move informed by prevailing sentiments from some sectors inside.
Let's reconvene, those of us who have finished picking a cup of tea, and then we can continue with the discussions.
They benefited more than the Ugandans.
If you've picked a cup of tea, you can come and finish it from inside.
And that they were not ready to employ Ugandans.
The celebrations were short-lived. People were to soon realize the decree was instead serving to disintegrate the entire economic structure, some effects of which the country still experiences.
The people who were managing production were expelled from the country.
The business community changed overnight from the Asian community to anybody.
Production simply plummeted.
The international isolation of Uganda for an already dislocated economy also hindered Uganda's participation in international markets due to the shortage of required supplies from a lack of foreign exchange.
All right, thank you, thank you, DJ. I think we shall not spend much more time beyond this. We want to straighten our goal into our questions and answer session. I know there are so many questions that are burning, and so we shall not keep them waiting. I have received a question here. And... The question says, "Is it in order for the bank to hold guarantors' money when the loan borrower defaults, and he or she has given a bank with security like a title and a land is there?" DJ, this is our first question. Okay, let me listen to your questions. I have one hand here, two, three, four. Yes, it is getting better. Mike, Michael, there's a hand there. Then you, there's a hand at the back there, there's a hand in the middle, and then you come back to Honorable.
Thank you very much. Massive ceremonies or massive program. I have two questions. My name is Otwalan Francis, a teacher, particularly teaching chemistry and biology. I'm very delighted to be...
At the back, can we maintain some little silence? Can we maintain some little silence, please? Let's maintain some silence as we go for tea. And please, I want to request that we make our questions brief, precise, and straight to the point.
My particular question goes to the stability of the dollar. Way back in 2006, the dollar was at 860, 890. Today it is at 3,600. It has never come down. And we're all very much aware that once the dollar is tampered with, our purchase power is also tampered with. It has affected the fuel so much, and I don't know whether the fuel will ever come down. Being our currency center, our main controlling regulator, is there anything that is gonna be done to ensure that the fuel comes a little down? Because once the fuel goes up, even just by 10 shillings, everything goes up. Sugar now is at 5,000. I think coming to 6,000. It does not come down. Will it ever come down? Secondly, about the environment. Bonna Governor, we appreciate you've talked about the environment. I'm particularly perturbed by the rate at which we are using charcoal. I particularly use charcoal, even this morning I used it. But I'm very sorry that the rate at which our forests are getting depleted is very, very high because of our dependence on charcoal and cheap fuel. Is there a way that electricity can be completely subsidized for every household to use electricity? Given that Uganda has a lot of water. Bali in particular. If we look at Bali, we can have our own turbine in one of the streams that flows down, and that will regulate the tariffs so that we can avoid using the charcoal. Then, two, I mean, three. The Karamoja. Karamoja is a vast land. How come that Libya was able to become forested? Israel is able to supply us with fruits, and yet we have vast land in Karamoja. Can there be a program to reforestate Karamoja? And then eventually, we shall decongest Bali, decongest other towns. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Let's take the next hand. Then, Michael, you go to the gentleman at the back with the hat, and come back to Honorable. We first respond to those, then we come back.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Governor. My name is Julius Odeke. I have only one question, and I need some explanation. When I was growing up in 1980, when President Mosewin came into power, we used to have this currency from 1 shilling to 20 notes. But today, But today, even yesterday, your representative was trying to alleviate us of a currency note of 100 thora. When we interact with citizens from other countries, they laugh at us, a country that has a denomination of 50 thora. What explanation can you give to the nation in relationship to our currencies that have shot up to 50 thoran currency note? In relation to the inflation, is it, does it stabilize the economy or it destabilizes the economy? Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay, yes, let's have the gentleman. Your name and the question, please.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to take the opportunity to thank Bank of Uganda for coming to engage the stakeholders on ground. I have a very heartening experience I want to share, and I request that you give me about five minutes.
Please reduce them to three. Five is too long. We need to give other people.
It's a bit heartening. I abruptly came because I knew of the meeting yesterday, but I would have carried facts. And I beg that big man you listen and listen in. A few years ago, I went and borrowed money from Equity Bank. I was a man working. I committed my salary to this bank for a period of about 10 years as earning a net of 7 million shillings, net. And it went to the bank for 10 years. I borrowed a loan. By the time I borrowed the loan, I was constructing a hotel, 20 rooms and a conference center, conference hall. And I gave them... It was standing on three plots. So I gave them two. The hotel at that time was about 40% done. The first salary they gave it was about 450 million. Well, that was the evaluation, and that was okay at the time. They gave me money, and I used it to complete the hotel. And the hotel, probably, at that, maybe as later, I'll tell you how much they sold it at. Now, where did the loan go wrong? I borrowed...
Let's keep a little silence at the back here so that we can listen to...
I borrowed at a rate of 21%. Along the way, the loan was moved from 21% to 32%. I was not involved. Nobody wrote to me. Nobody came to me for any discussion. And I kept on paying money. The first installment that would go to the bank was my salary, 7 million shillings. And then I added on more money. At the end of the period, when the loan had gone wrong, I had paid about 235 million, and the loan was at 235 million. So at that point, I think there was credit crunch or something, and my loan, my contract was not renewed. So I sat down with the bank. We started discussing. But all they would give me are letters of evidence that we have served you. Some would be served at my workplace. Some would be served with Ascaris at the hotel. And one day, I was somewhere in Barara. I saw a message on my phone showing that somebody had deposited 400 and something million on the account. A clear indication that the property, about nine years later or seven years later, which they valued 440 million shillings, had been sold at about 430. Completed 16 rooms with a conference hall, all of them first class, because I traveled to Taka and carried two full containers of... punished it so well. It was not this Takataka, Senchirinyam. Now, what makes it more interesting? They never even came back to do an evaluation, opening up of boundaries. They sold the property, and they sold the three plots, including the one they didn't have the title because they were all in one fence. That is evidence enough. They didn't know what they were doing. They just sold the property. Now, I sold almost everything I had to pay that loan, to deposit their money. And I just could not reduce that lot. I sold a gym. I had a gym about 400 million. I sold it off.
Let's go to the question.
To the worst, lowest unit to deposit. I need to understand. And at that time, I also wrote to Bank of Uganda. We went to court. Now, I don't know because what else did they do? After selling the property, they left, they paid and left about 15 million shillings, not paid on my account, which continued to spoil my credit, credibility. Do you understand? So my question here is... Because I still don't know. We went to court. I first left it at that at some point because it was giving me a lot of pressure. But I want to know. When a bank behaves in such terrible misconduct, stuff the way they do things, you engage them and they tell you everything can be completed in Nairobi, not here, where can one run? A lot of people losing their properties. So many Ugandans.
Good. Thank you very much. I think the Deputy Governor has picked it.
It's very heartening.
We shall respond to it, and then we do a follow-up. Thank you. Is Honorable John Faith here?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to raise a question. But before I raise the question, I want to bring apologies from the area Member of Parliament, Honorable Karim Masab.
Members at the back, can we listen?
He was supposed to be here, but because of national duties, he has not been able to come. And he sent his apologies. And also the woman Member of Parliament from Bali City chose to send her apologies. This may have not come out through the presentation, Deputy Governor, but it's important that's clarified because we hear voices from the people. And I think this is a right for her to raise it so that if there's clarity, it can be given. The DFCU Bank, according to a court ruling on 24th of October, it's supposed to return 48 properties back to Crane Bank. How does this leave the depositors and the status of the bank? And the depositors all sit here? That is key because people need to be confident. I speak this because we have over nine or some good billions there for PDM and many other deposits, myself including personal. So that needs really be clarified so that we are able to be confident of how we are proceeding in that regard. We have the Uganda Development Bank. And this bank is supposed to take care of the businessmen who have seen here, there are very many. Interestingly, it's only located in Kampala. And I am not very sure if there is any businessman I know in Bali who has ever got any money from the Uganda Development Bank. It is supposed to be a bank that gives affordable loans at good rate for productive purposes. You see, I really need to be clarified on that. But also, how can we ensure that Uganda Development Bank becomes decentralized? Or have regions, just like Bank of Uganda, we have the currency center in Mbaale, we have regional places so that a businessman in Mbaale can walk to the Uganda Development Bank here in Mbaale, put in what they need so that that money is not only for people in Kampala. So that really qualifies the appreciation I have for this engagement being brought in the region so that all other services of the bank can actually be brought to the region. And I think the rest really have been clarified on for now. I will rest my case. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable. Members, allow the Deputy Governor to respond to that first round of questions, then we shall come back for the second round of questions. Thank you to you, Deputy Governor.
It's okay. Thank you very much for these very, very important questions. I came with a team of staff from Bank of Uganda. And in Bank of Uganda, we believe in teamwork. So I'll be distributing some of these questions to them to answer. So the very first question, which was in writing, and then the question regarding Equity Bank. I'm going to ask the Director of Commercial Banking to respond to that. And then, is there a representative of Equity Bank here? Huntington, does Equity Bank have a branch in Mbaale? So where is the representative of Equity Bank? Was he invited? So he's not here? Okay, you take note of that. But Huntington, you will address the question of Equity Bank and then the first question, and then the one on currency issues. I'm going to ask Hassan to talk to it. And then... Let me attempt the ones on economics, but I will ask Kenneth, Director of Communications, to weigh in after I've weighed in. Mr. Otu, you said the exchange rate in 2006 was 890, and in 2023, it's 3,600. Let me begin by reminding you that the exchange rate in Uganda is market determined. Bank of Uganda does not fix the exchange rate. It is the supply and demand conditions that determine the exchange rate. So whatever you are seeing in the movements of the exchange rates are really a reflection of the demand and supply conditions. But more fundamentally, let me look at what are the fundamentals that affect the movement of the exchange rate? The key one is what we call the terms of trade. That is, the relative price between a unit of import and a unit of export. Now, what has been happening is that, on average, the unit of imports has been rising higher than the unit of exports, which means that for every unit, you are paying more in terms of the dollar terms compared to what you're receiving from your exports in dollar terms. So what happens then? In that case, the currency depreciates. And then there's also what we call the inflation differential. What is the differential between Uganda's inflation and our trading partner inflation? You find that if the inflation differential works against Uganda, the currency has got to adjust to reflect that. And then there are others, like the receipt of balance of payments support we get from countries. You recall that in the early part of this century, that is from 2000 up to about 2011, 2012, Uganda used to be a darling of the donors. We were receiving a lot of balance of payment support. But things have since changed in that our balance of payment support has kind of like reduced. When you get balance of payment support in dollars, in pounds, in yen, in euros, and you are spending in shillings, it means that you have to sell the dollars to the market to get the shillings. So that source of foreign currency has kind of like reduced, and it is affecting the exchange rate. So a culmination of all those factors explains why the exchange rate has moved from 890 to 3,600 to date. But I think you missed one point. One point is, let's look at what happened in the last three years. Do you know what the exchange rate was in 2020? No, 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 2020? What was the exchange rate in 2020? I think it was about 3,600, on average, 3,600. And where is it today? It's still there. So let's look at what's happening in the recent past. Are you still having those massive movements? No. So that means we are getting our act correct. That inasmuch as the currency has moved to where it is now, the rate at which it's changing has been contained. So it means that we are putting in place policies, we are putting in place measures, we are putting in place guidelines that are mitigating the kind of concern that you raise. So we ensuring that there is good macroeconomic stability. We are bringing a lot in terms of triggering our export side as well. We are getting new inflows. Things like remittances are coming on board. Foreign direct investment for the oil and the gas sector is bringing in money. So that explains why over the last three years the exchange rate has remained stable. So, Mr. Otu, don't live so much into the history. Let's look at what's happening now. I think we've come a long way. So I think after this, you should pat the shoulders of the Bank of Uganda team that in the last three years, we've managed to maintain the stability of the exchange rate. Okay? Right. Honorable Member of Parliament, DFCU, I believe you read newspapers. DFCU came with a statement after that court ruling. I hope you read it. What did it say? Thank you.
They are well capitalized.
Yeah.
And they vacated those premises by 2020. But I am talking about the people who do not read the newspapers, and they are here.
Okay.
And I need them to hear that.
I'm glad you have mentioned it. DFCU is well capitalized. They have since kept their doors open. Nobody has gone to DFCU to withdraw money, and have been told there's no money. So I think you have answered your question. And I cannot comment any further than that because the case of DFCU is still in court. I don't want to comment on matters that are still in court. Thank you. Now, can I ask Huntington to come to address the first question that was read by Luke and then the one of equity? Since the equity representative is not here, it is unfortunate that they were invited and is not here. But Huntington.
Good afternoon to you, ladies and gentlemen. There are two questions that have been raised that concern the Commercial Banking Department. The first one is a guarantor. Why would a bank attach the properties of a guarantor when the primary borrower is still around and has colatos? Let me first warn you. As individuals, before you become a guarantor, you need to appreciate the responsibilities that you're carrying. you need to appreciate the responsibilities that you're carrying on your shoulders. What it means is that if the borrower fails to pay, you're promising the lender that you'll pay on their behalf. So if you decide to become a guarantor, make sure you are ready to carry that cross. Okay? Secondly, before a bank stretches its hands onto the guarantor, they should first exhaust the relationship with the borrower. Isn't it the case, DFCU? So I don't know who raised this question and I would want to get the details of this bank so that we can follow it up. Because if they didn't exhaust the colatos of the primary borrower and they went to the guarantor, then we need to find out what happened and how they go to that position. So whoever you are, get to me, give me evidence. We can have an extended discussion on that. The second was about Equity Bank. It's indeed unfortunate that Equity Bank is not with us here, yet it's a prominent bank in the area and we had a team from Communications Department that must have reached to them and invited them to come for this engagement. But I'll need to get your details and we have an extended discussion and see how we can review your case. Though you indicated that it is before the courts of law and it's usually not very good to open what courts of law have decided. But we can have an engagement after this session and then we see how we can help where possible. The third question was about the Uganda Development Bank. As my colleague Alex indicated yesterday, Uganda Development Bank is one of the institutions that is used for extending the agriculture credit facility. And until recently, they only had one office in the country, which is in Kampala. But they are progressively beginning to open up branches and their first branch they've opened is in Gulu. So I don't know whether they will come to Mumbai or not, but they've started the process of expanding their reach to other parts of the country. Probably in future, they also come here and other parts of the country as well. Thank you.
Hassan, please.
Through you, Deputy Governor. The question I'm responding to relates to, I think it was raised by Mr. Odeke. In summary, his concern is that other people may be finding amusement at us having a 50,000 shilling banknote. Probably, he also hinted that there's a feeling that we should be doing a 100,000 shilling note, which probably would raise more amusement. Here, the matter is, what is the purchasing power? What weight does our currency hold relative to whoever may be finding amusement? It is not the number of zeros on the banknote, yes, they matter, but it is not a fashion to reduce them for the sake of reducing them. Sustaining those zeros or reducing them is guided by the economic fundamentals. How stable are you? You may slash the zeros, but if the fundamentals are not consistently stable, these include production, the exchange rate, inflation. If those are not stable, you will slash the zeros and sooner than later, you will have them back. Okay? Recall that when we had the currency reform in 1987, we slashed some zeros from our denominations. But because the fundamentals were still a bit volatile, sooner than later, they came back. And for a long time, we have not added those zeros. And right now, there is no reason for us to issue a 100K denomination because of what the deputy governor explained earlier. What the bank is pursuing is stability. Inflation has been kept stable and low sustainably. That is one of the reasons why we have not moved to higher zeros. You may want to compare with a country, say like Sudan. Let me pick that example. Their highest denomination is 1,000 shillings. Okay? But would you consider them to be a better economy than Uganda? I will not answer that. We have other countries in the region that have denominations, like Burundi, for example, their highest denomination is 10,000. Okay? Would you consider them to be a better economy than Uganda? Okay? That's for you to digest. So it is not the number of zeros necessarily that mean that you are worse off than another country that has fewer zeros on your banknotes. It speaks to, if we are, for example, to use a conversion unit between these two economies, if we took, for example, the dollar to compare the two economies, our shilling, you'll need 3,700 to buy one dollar. You may need fewer shillings in Sudan, fewer Sudanese pounds to buy a dollar. But that dollar, that equivalent in dollar terms in Sudan, how much does it buy for you? Same as here in Uganda, that equivalent of a dollar, how much does it buy for you? That would tell you, give you an indication on how valuable your currency is relative to the other currency that may have fewer zeros. Thank you.
I think the deputy governor answered the question on the exchange rate. And maybe I'll just add on the issue of the number of zeros and inflation. I think the main issue is that we still have low denomination notes for the day-to-day transactions. The higher denomination notes are there to support large transactions. Remember that as a country, we are very cash-based. So if you go to the advanced countries like US or UK, if you went into a store with a $100 note to buy, they'll look at you suspiciously. Why? Because they use cards. Cash is very rare. People don't use cash. While here in Uganda, we are all using cash. Even when you're buying a car or a piece of land, some people want to carry bags of cash. So if we don't have a large denomination note, let's say you're going to buy a piece of land at 70 million and we didn't have a 50K and we had only 1,000 as our highest denomination, how many trucks would you need to take that money? So those are some of the considerations. But as we move into digital transactions, less cash-based transactions, these are some of the things that will be ironed out with time. Thank you. Thank you very much. Deputy Governor, the only question we are remaining with in that segment was a question on environment. Substitution of charcoal for other fuels. Yes, thank you, Mr. Otu, for that question. Sorry, I forgot it. You know, transitioning to green energy is very expensive and is time-consuming. But it's something we can do in the interim. Let me just use you example. You say you use charcoal this morning for making your chai. What stove were you using? The one that consumes charcoal very much. Suppose you bought a charcoal-saving stove. You know these ones that consume less charcoal over a period of time. I think that will be your contribution in the meantime, as we're waiting for solar panels, as we're waiting for more hydrolithic power to come on board. Because, you see, the cost of moving to green energy is very expensive. By the time you construct a hydrolithic power dam, by the time you buy a solar panel, by the time you bring all these geothermal things, that is very expensive and we don't yet have the resources, but we're moving towards there. But there's what we can do with the people in the village. And that's why I was urging commercial banks this morning that as a part of supporting the transition to this green financing, more investment should go to these energy-saving stops. So that instead of burning one bag of charcoal in one month, you can burn a bag of charcoal in three months using that energy-saving stop. So, Mr. Otu, if you don't have a charcoal-saving stove, can we have a discussion after this and see if we can buy one? Good. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for those questions and the responses. We are going to the next segment, but allow me read to you the next two, then we can pick other three from the audience. One is, many customers have issues. We are told that DPF protects our money. How exactly does DPF do that? That is one. Number two. My question paper has disappeared. Let's go back to the audience. Pick. Okay. The high table has a question. I will start from there. Please bring the microphone quickly and then we pick. Oh, there is one there. Okay.
Thank you, MC. The Deputy Governor, Bank of Uganda, and your entire team. All protocols observed. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I'm Namalwa Emily Madoy Fatima, the Deputy Mayor for Industry Division, also the Empress Farmer. This question is going to Bank of Uganda. We have got leaflets on the treasury bonds which are showing that we, Ugandans like me, I can lend it to the government. They were trying to understand it. So my question is, they have understood it small, small. All of us may not understand it. Is it okay if someone from Bank of Uganda can clearly explain to us in a simple language that we can also go outside there and explain to our people that we can, in fact, lend to the government of Uganda at a profit? Question two. If I'm allowed. I'm presenting, let it be the second last. Okay, the voice of bankers, farmers. Yesterday, we learnt about agriculture credit facility, where farmers are supposed to get an agriculture loan at 1%. I'm a farmer and I've gotten these loans. And my fellow farmers are here, can attest to me. And the bankers are also here. If there's anyone who has gotten an agriculture loan at 1% per month, please help us raise your hand. At 1% per month. Because me, when I go to my banker, they give me at 2%, which is 24% per annum. So my concern here is, either the banks are using the money for this facility to make profits for themselves or they intentionally do not want to give to the public because they are getting minimal profits from this facility. So the question is, how is Bank of Uganda going to help my fellow farmers, especially the smallholder farmers, access this money at 1% as it is telling us? Thank you, but I still have my one question. Next question.
Thank you. Let's pick one more question there. Come in the middle here, pick one. And on this right row, pick one, and then we first respond to those. Oh. Okay, you have chosen this side. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deputy Governor, I need some more explanation about your mission statement. Because when you talk of promotion of price stability and a sound financial system, I haven't got it clearly whether the prices you're talking about include commodity prices. Yet every day, we experience unstable pricing in the market. And here is where you're talking about free market economy and that the government cannot actually regulate prices. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kennedy, where are you? Okay, can you give me one question there?
Thank you very much. I'm by the name of Zinsoo Gaya Youssef. I'm the General Secretary at Mumbai Central Market. My question is, who regulates money renders? Why am I asking that question? Money renders have taken out the vendors in the central market, I think even in the other markets, and they are charging us 40%, 20%. On addition to that, they are even retaining vendors' national IDs. We have been raising this question and we have been, we have not been getting a correct reply from the regulators. And if necessary, last time, we had His Excellency saying these people are criminals and they are supposed to be arrested. But authority, you're just looking. You're not arresting these people. Then another question.
The last one, please.
The last question I'm asking, me as a common vendor who sells tomatoes in Mumbai Central Market, we face a challenge, a challenge whereby to exchange notes. Why don't you leave your comfort zones in those expensive facilities you sit in the bank where you want us to take the notes and you bring those services nearer? Because my common vendor in Mumbai Central Market will not have all the notes to go to the branch of Bank of Uganda. Why don't you extend these things to these people who even fear to enter into banks? Thank you very much. I remain in Zinsoo Gaya Youssef.
Thank you very much. Give me the last question and then we... Kennedy, the last question, please. We are coming. We are coming.
Thank you very much. Namaya Aziza, honourable representative of Uganda.
Thank you very much for that gender balance. I was facing pressure here. They were demanding for you to ask.
My question goes to the Bank of Uganda. Is that, why is it that these microfinances have different?
Can we listen? Can we listen to the question, please?
My question is, why is it that these microfinances have different interest rates on their loans? Who dictates for their interests? It goes to the Bank of Uganda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Governor, do you want some more too? Or you first respond to those? Okay, we get some more too. Kennedy, there are so many hands this side. You have not exhausted? Pick one there. Come back and pick one on this side and we first respond. and we, and we first respond to those.
Uh, thank you so much. My, my, my name is Masinde Robert. I'm the Secretary of Mbari State Property Owners Association. Uh, my question is, Bank of Uganda came up with a very, very good program of promoting...
Can we listen?
Uh, Bank of Uganda came up with a very good program of promoting financial trust among communities. But to my disappointment, as one of the master trainers, this information is not written. I'm therefore asking, does the government of Uganda have a clear program regarding financial trust, given its relevance in the economy?
Thank you very much. Can we spare the next minute for the next presenter, for the next question? Uh, Deputy Governor, meanwhile, Equity Bank has had your call. They have finally come. Um, one question there and then we, we first respond to that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Tony Wamagaliya, my name is, I represent Bongo Sub County. Just two questions. One, the late Governor, Bank of Uganda mentioned that this time he was not to print money for elections. What, under what circumstances does the Bank of Uganda print money for elections? Number two, there is already talk in the corridors that Uganda is to start printing money from here. With the current situation where money can be printed anyhow. Shall we be safe? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's respond to that. When we come, we start there. We shall set where you are. No, I didn't give you the microphone, please. Okay. No, I'm, I'm not closing. Can you spare it? Then I come back, I will start with you. Thank you very much. Okay. Again, uh, may I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? Again, these are very, very useful questions. So, in the spirit of teamwork again, uh, there's been a question on the Deposit Protection Fund. And we're very privileged to have the CEO of the Deposit Protection Fund, uh, Julia. So she's gonna answer that question. And then, um, I already mentioned that we had a number of stakeholders here. UBA is here. A question was asked about UBA. Patricia, are you sitting around? Yes, I want you to answer the question on UBA. And then on the SCF, can I see which banks are here? Particularly, I want Centenary Rural Development Bank. Are you here? Is Opotinta Bank here? Opotinta Bank? Post Bank? Yes, I will need particularly Centenary Rural Development Bank and Opotinta Bank to answer the questions on SCR. And then the one asked by the General Secretary in Mbari Market, Umbra, I had breakfast with the Umbra guy, is he here? Yes, I want you to attend to all the questions on money lending. Because everywhere you go, money lenders are becoming a thorny issue. And as you've heard, so please, could you respond to the issue? Because these are the guys who regulate money lenders. And then Hassan, the issue about exchanging notes, what can we do about exchanging notes? Particularly for the, uh, chaps in the, in the market? And then, why do different microfinance institutions have different interest rates? This is a cross cutting, but I will ask Huntington to talk about the ones that we supervise. And then, financial literacy. Makai, you've been going out countrywide to do financial literacy, but it looks like some guys do not know. So what have you been doing? So tell them what you've been doing. And then, I, I like the last question. Talk about printing money. It's just a talk about printing money. So, don't, don't take it seriously. So, you know, here, we, we are here to discuss facts. So don't talk about rumour mongering and whatever. So, that one, just forget about it. I think we came out clearly, right, to say that that was not true. So please, enjoy your sleep, don't get worried. Now, I am going to address one on price stability. One said, you say that inflation, the price stability, prices are going up and down. You see, price stability does not mean that prices are constant. No, 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 no. Price stability doesn't mean that prices are constant. I think price stability means that prices are within a, a chain, within a certain range. That is terrible, that does not disorganize your plans, that does not affect your purchasing power significantly. So for example, I mentioned this morning that inflation is now down to 2%. It doesn't mean to say that prices are declining or that prices are constant. It is the rate at which prices are increasing. So prices are not constant. They are now increasing at a much, much slower rate. In October last year, on average, they were increasing at about 10%. But this year, in the month of, um, of October, they have been increasing at 2%. It means that while some prices may be rising above 2%, others may be falling below 2%, but on average, it is 2%. You know, Nobad Mao doesn't like the idea of averages. Because he says, you can have a half of your body in hell, a half of your body in a freezer, but on average, you're okay. But, but that's not the concept we are talking about here. Okay, so can I have Claire?
Uh, thank you very much, Deputy Governor. Uh, allow me to also stand on the existing protocol, but to recognize the district and the city leadership, to recognize, uh, the team from the royal family and to recognize the clergy and all the members of parliament that have been able to join us. I, I thank you very much for coming in. Uh, and I'd like to answer the question that has been posed to the Deposit Protection Fund. You say that you protect deposits. How exactly do you do that? But to answer that question, I'd just like to give a, a brief history about the Deposit Protection Fund. So the Deposit Protection Fund started as a baby in the Bank of Uganda, into which the banks were putting in some money that we call premiums. But in 2016, the government of Uganda decided that this fund now needed to be stronger and to be a separate entity of its own to protect your deposits much stronger. And therefore, we have now a board of directors. You have the CEO who's speaking and I have my team. I have a team that have come with, I'd like to introduce them. I have Patrick Izaga, he's our Director of Communications. And also Balam Sempala, he's the one who is our Director, IT. So I'm not alone. And if there are any other questions, I'm sure they'll be able to, to answer them. Uh, so ordinarily, uh, if you gave a business, let's say you gave a saloon your money, the owner of the saloon asked you for some money and you gave that saloon owner the money. But then tomorrow, the saloon owner says that I've closed business, there is no more saloon, what happens to you? You'd have to wait for the saloon owner to start selling some of the properties that they have. The DG has talked about the balloon, uh, which are put on ladies' heads. So you'll have to wait for that saloon owner to start selling the dryer, selling whatever assets they have to be able to pay you. That doesn't take a short time because they have to look for customers to buy those assets. It's the same way with the Bank's Protection Fund. You will have to wait for the assets of that bank to be sold so that proceeds can be received to pay you. Because remember, you had deposited money in that bank. Now it has closed, you have to wait. But the government of Uganda said, no, you're not going to wait for all that long. As immediate as possible, we shall give you up to 10 million shillings. And the rest, we can wait for that liquidation process. So that's how the Deposit Protection Fund protects you. That is the mandate that has been given to us. Like the DG indicated, for us, we wait for the end. He talked about ICU and almost talked about a mortuary. So I can say the DPF is sort of like, we start getting interested in those banks that could be in the ICU and which could be in the mortuary. And the banks are just like you and me. We're all here, we are healthy, some of us are getting medication. But the doctors will not stop us from dying when that time comes. But do we want bodies littered all over Mbari City because there is no one who is organizing how we are put to rest? So that is how the DPF comes in. If a bank has reached that point where the Bank of Uganda has said, this bank now has to be closed because it is more risky continuing to operate, the DPF will come in to pay you as fast as possible, up to 10 million. There is a concern that probably the 10 million is low. But I'm happy to report at the 10 million, we are covering 98% of the depositors in this country fully. Which means if a bank was to close, 98% of the depositors in that bank would be covered fully. Maybe to add on, that out of the 98%, 94% have less than 1 million. So, so, so that doesn't speak so well for, for the country. But it speaks to the fact that the 10 million shillings is actually adequate protection, protection that the government of Uganda is giving through, uh, the DPF. Now, there is always a confusion between our mandate when a bank is closed and then what happens to the customer when the bank is open. And what we're encouraging the depositors whenever we've gone out to the field is to say, raise your issues with your respective commercial banks and go through the channels that you can go through. If that complaint is not addressed, we have the central bank. The central bank, I'm aware, has a customer complaints desk where you can put in those complaints. They are investigated and then you're helped depending on what the problem is. The Deposit Protection Fund comes in at that time, your bank is closed. So that is how we protect you. You don't go away empty-handed, at least you get up to 10 million. But to get the up to 10 million very fast, I'm sure many of you have received messages from your financial institutions. Give us your national ID, uh, number and give us an alternative mode of payment. That is to help us to identify you very fast. It is also to help us to pay you very fast. We would love to pay you without you having to go to banks to line up because that is very distressing for you. It also means that next time you might not put your money in another bank. And that is very disastrous for us as a country because the banking sector really is an engine of the economic growth that we all want to see. So please, give that information to your banks. Because when the banks have that information, in case your bank is closed, and I'd like to say in the unlikely event that your bank is closed and the Bank of Uganda tells the DPF to pay, we shall just pay your money on your mobile phone or pay you your money on an alternative bank account that you have given us. So members continue banking with confidence, knowing that your money is protected. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, Julia, for that very good response. I missed one question on the Treasury Bills. Kennedy, I'm going to ask you to decode those words we use in the Bank of Uganda to talk to the people about Treasury Bills. And then the gentleman from Equity Bank, where is he? Can you come? We were looking for you very seriously. Yes. Now, I want you, who asked the question? Juko? Where is he? Juko, could you explain your question to this gentleman on a bilateral basis? He is coming here to answer your question, right? Because we want to continue. Okay, so you go to Mr. Juko. He will tell, he, he's right behind there. Yes. You go to him. He, he says you, you, you rip him off, so you can talk to him. Yeah. You are going to talk on the Treasury Bonds. Okay, so this lady here is going to answer the question on Treasury Bonds. You got your question?
Um, thank you, DG. Mulembe, Iwamasawa. Banaga, Saramkisamirembe. I'm here to interest you with an investment called Treasury Bills and Bonds. So I'll use the simplest language to help you understand. Um, an investment in Treasury Bills or Bonds is lending money to government of Uganda by buying either a Treasury Bill or Bond for a specified period of time. And after that investment period ends, the money you lent will be refunded back to your account with an investment. You can choose to either buy a Treasury Bill or Bond. A bill is in three months, six months and one year. A bond is from two years, three, five, 10, 15 and 20. So when you invest in a Treasury Bill...
Kennedy, let's, let's reduce the murmuring so that we can listen. I think you are interested in these Treasury Bills and Bonds, so don't miss the information.
When you invest in a Treasury Bill, your, your interests will be paid back at the end of the investment period. For example, if you invest 1 million for three months, you earn back your money at the end of three months. The bond differs a bit. When you invest in a bond, you earn interest every after six months. For example, if you invest in a bond of two years, every six months you're going to get a payment. Meaning in a year, you're going to get two interest payments, what we call coupon payments. So literally, in a period of two years, you're going to get four interest payments. This is an investment you're going to do and your capital or principal amount you've invested will be bounced back to your account fully with an interest. So how do you start this journey? You walk to any commercial bank. We, I don't know how many branches are here. Walk to a commercial bank, um, request the banking officer to open up an account. They will pull out two forms for you. One is accounts opening form. It just asks you for your details. Your name may be Mr. Waleimba Wamsiru. Uh, indicate your account number, your national ID, your next of kin, your phone number and mother's maiden name. That is accounts opening. Now, when you start the journey of investing, it's called a bid application form. You state clearly your name. You state it, the investment period. You want to invest maybe a bond of two years. The amount of money you want to invest. And then you sign off. Literally, you're telling the bank to withdraw money on your account and invest in a Treasury Bill or Bond. So who is eligible? Are you 18 years? You're an adult, therefore you qualify. Um, pension years, 60 years. Your pension money, where do you put it? An opportunity to invest in a bond and a coupon every six months so that you avoid stress and hassles in other businesses that may give you headache wherever. And yet you're already 60, you need peace. Then, um, Sakos, Bamasawa, we are farmers. Then, circles, Bama Saba, we are farmers. Farmers depend on seasons, which season are backed up by ifla. So when you harvest your money from the previous circles, where do you put it? Put your money in a Treasury Bill as you wait for ifla, for the next season to fall, so that you can invest. So instead of keeping your money in ports and ceilings, put your money in a Bill for three months and a return. Then you can put it in your other harvest for the next season. Investment circles, this is an opportunity for you to invest. So how do you know about when the Treasury Bills and Bonds are offered? We offer an invitation to tender through the press. We are always advertising the new vision. We are transparent, we inform the public when we are offering either Bill or Bond. And in the same press, we inform the public the results that are from the auction. So why is Bank of Uganda here, interesting you about an investment opportunity called Treasury Bills and Bond? One, it carries minimal risk. The money you inject, the money you invest in returns back fully to your account with an interest. And, two, you can use it as a security almost single to get a loan from it. You don't have to put a car loan, you don't have to put a title. You can risk the money invested in the Treasury Bill or Bond to get, but depends on how much you have to qualify for that loan. So at any time you feel you are tired of that investment and you have another investment opportunity, then can give you a better return. You are fully, I mean, you have the right to walk back to your bank and sell back that paper, that security, and get back your money. However, the interest that you entered in at the point of entry, will not be the same interest that you're going to earn because you're exiting before the maturity period. You wrote a contract and signed, I want to invest in a one year. You're the same person coming back and saying, I want to withdraw my money after two months. They'll give you interest for those two months. However, remember, your capital, your principal amount is not touched. So does this investment attract any tax? Yes. Because in government of Uganda, there's no income you're going to get and then you don't pay withholding tax. The Treasury Bills from three months, six months, and one year, plus the Bond of two, three, and five years, attract withholding tax of 20%. The Bonds from 10, 15, and 20 attract withholding tax of 10%. We have at a table, a counter, I mean, we have a counter at Bank of Uganda. For those who have the opportunity to cross to Kampala, the gate opposite Cairo Bank is open to the public. We have the security guards, they're armed, but they're very loving if you're there for a right reason. Introduce yourself, my name is Waleyimba Wamsiru. I'm coming from Rakaka. I am here to get knowledge about Treasury Bills and Bonds. They will walk you in and there's somebody who attend to you or any of us will come and attend to you. So we also have a stall where we can tend to further questions. So, Mfunidawa, what is the standing rate so far? These rates keep changing every day because we have a market that runs on day to day. We have a three months that is standing at 9.671%. A six month is standing at 11.878%. A one year at 12.778%. A two year at 12.997%. Three year 13.31%. A five year at 14.51%. A 10 year is at 15.09%. A 15 year is 15.128%. And the highest security offered is at 15.159%. But these rates keep changing on a daily basis because there's trading every day that goes on. So today they are high, they are low, so the interest rates are not fixed, they are dynamic. Wanyala, to listen to me, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, DG. I think we go to you, be it some clarity?
Yes, thank you. I just want to understand what is the minimum capital for investment for either Treasury Bill or a Bond?
Wanyala, I am so sorry, I forgot about that. The minimum you need is 100,000, but you can put any amount of money, even 1 trillion. However, the more you put, the more returns you get. Why? Because the interest is calculated on how much money you put, the rate of that period you've invested. So that determines how much money you will get, Wanyala.
Can you tell me about Okusevinga project that's coming soon? About 10,000. Okay. But there's a project called Okusevinga that is a bond we rolled out where the minimum amounts are going to be lowered, much below 100,000. Particularly for the people at the bottom of the pyramid to take advantage of also. Okay. Now, I have some bankers. Can I have Centenary and Oportinthe Bank to come and explain? The argument here is that instead of giving borrowers ACF money, you are giving them their money, your money, and not give them ACF money?
Deputy Governor, and Daur Proto observed, good afternoon. My name is Jonah Nyango. Acting Branch Manager, Centenary Bank Mbaale Branch. And I'm honored to have my regional manager in the audience. One, about the Agricultural Credit Facility. I want to first of all dispel the fear and the rumor that when someone comes and applies for an agricultural loan, we give them other facilities. One, I want to bring to your attention that Centenary Bank, like other participating institutions, as have been highlighted, I mean, indicated on that flyer that each and everyone has, offers agricultural loans under the Agricultural Credit Facility. Currently, maybe some people may not be aware, we, for example, recently this year, we entered into MO with organized farmers in Ibuuduma, Manafa, under their area cooperatives. And we are giving them agricultural credit loans, agricultural loans under this facility at an interest rate of 12% to those who are in production and 15% to those who are in the marketing, who are in marketing, grain production, agric marketing if I would put it like that. So the facility is available. Just walk to Centenary Bank, Mbaale Branch, or any branch, Kapchurwa, Palisa, Komi, those that are, Tororo is near here, and talk to the loan officer about the Agricultural Credit Facility. And no one is going to divert and give you another facility in the name of interest rate and all of that. And if that happened, for example, at the time of signing these agreements, kindly look at, or ask this officer about the interest that has been given to you on this facility. If it is higher than that, then contact, I mean, engage either the supervisor. Our supervisors are always in the open, they are not in offices and all that. Just walk to them and ask, tell them, I applied for this facility and before you sign off, we shall have that rectified. I hope that information helps us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, DG. Rex Achilla Arasissi Mbaale. I just wanted these bankers who are offered this facility to be exact on what the public there is interested. Since 2009, when this facility was offered by Bank of Uganda, how many groups or Ugandans in Mbaale have benefited through your bank? That's the most interesting and the most important to me. Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask the bankers together with you to work out the numbers from Bali and send to the, to the Arasissi? To the Arasissi? Because right now, I don't think they have those numbers. Yes, all the Arasissi region. Work out the number of beneficiaries. I think we have those numbers, yes. So we'll send it to the Arasissi and all the other district leaders. Okay. All right, thank you so much for that very good. So colleagues, I think you've heard this, right? If at any time you have been cheated or what have you, there is a procedure where you can follow up. When you're asking for ACF and you're given otherwise, then you can follow up. Now, can I have the one on Umr? Is the equity guy ready? Umr, first come. And then after Umr, equity.
Proto observed, good afternoon. Kamahua. My name is James Morgan Ijod. I am with Uganda Microfinance Regulatory Authority. First of all, I would like to thank the leadership of this great city of Mbaale, the clergy, Arasissi, the honored guests, the guests from the kingdom. Wanyala, for being here, thank you for being here. I think most of you are saying there's only one regulator here for this function. I was within there, also hidden, but I'm also regulator. I regulate the tier four microfinance and money lenders. Umr is an autonomous government entity that is mandated to license, regulate, and supervise money lenders and non-depositing microfinances, circles, and self-help groups. And I think within Amidi STAS, we do have some for companies. Can I have Dark Hill? Dark Hill is available? Oh, thank you. Premier Credit? Premier Credit, Fin Credit? I think I noticed. Yes. What does Umr do? We regulate, license, and supervise. Before you come to us, you have to be a company. We do not regulate individuals. The purpose of Umr, as why it was accepted, was to curb this briefcase lending. The lenders were too many, someone would lend in a car. Actually, the first time I met a money lender, I was, I went to go here and he was, he picked money from his boot and gave me, not knowing one day I would also work in a regulatory authority and knowing the principles of how to operate. So, Umr, before you get licensed by Umr, you need to be a company. There are some documents you pick from URSB. That is a Certificate of Incorporation, Form 18, and Form 20. The IDs of the director and certified memorandum and articles of association. All these documents are to be certified and brought to our offices and that we verify. After verification, we do come to the ground, we do our inspection. So when I hear that there are un-scopeless money lenders within here, yes, they are there. Not saying that Umr is not aware, we are aware. Our capacity is still small, but we are doing all our best. We have been in all regions. We have met the leaders of these regions and they have been able to assure us that they would be able to provide us with lists of these companies that are unlicensed. I also implore Madame Mayor, Deputy Mayor, you said, I believe before someone operates in your city, there's an operational license that they get. So please, before you issue out, leaders of the city, before you issue out an operational license to somebody who's going to conduct money lending services, please make sure they have a license from Uganda Microfinance Regulatory Authority. And then money lenders who are licensed, there are dos and don'ts, which I was also do. You are not supposed to take ATM cards. You're not supposed to take national IDs, this is property of the government. You're not supposed to take academic documents. You're not supposed to take sales agreements. That me, James, have sold Mr. Odeke this plot of land. No, it's supposed to be a land title, a logbook, and whatnot. So, we are there to limit predatory lending, to restore consumer protection, to enhance financial inclusion in this sector. Bank of Uganda may have a bigger chunk of the tier one, tier two, tier three. But let me tell you this, ours is wider. Ours is wider. So, I do not want to be, I don't want to say a lot, but with the interest rate, I think most of you have heard what took place. The President talked about it, that there are ongoing talks. However, what an institution comes to us, if you go to an institution and they lend you at 30%, you do have a right to deliver, to either bargain and say, no, I do not want to get a loan at this interest rate, it's upon you. And besides, those money lenders have to be transparent. It's not that we allow them to lend at that rate, but they should be transparent. We are all handling financial, this is a financial, this is financial, these are financial companies, and we all need this financial help. So, we do have a toll-free line that in case you are not satisfied with what I have brought up here today, we do have a toll-free line.
I think before you read the toll-free line, she seems to have a question in line with that.
Let him answer also the code on the salaries of the staffs.
Oh, yes, coding. We do, I think there's the non-depositing microfinances. So I do look at, let's see, all these that do coding. There's at times you get issues of over-deduction, is it? You do get over-deduction and so there is a period in which that code can be turned off. I do have also a number over the Consumer and Lenders Association in case you're not satisfied with the, or maybe with the financial institution. You could still call them and you discuss in a way, and all this can be mitigated between you and then the company.
Okay. Thank you, Umr.
Yes, please.
If you can allow me some map for him, it is like he's saying, they do not have a regulated interest rate for even regulated money lenders. So my question here, I requested the Deputy Governor. Excuse me, members. I'm speaking on behalf of the silent majority. In 2019, I lost 20 million shillings to Dunamis coins. I know you're here and you're silent. And the matter went to Umr because they told us it is the regulating authority and it is the one that regulated Dunamis coins. How have you helped Ugandans who lost money in those scams? It is not only Dunamis coins, but so many others which came up. If you knew about Dunamis coins, then another one would come up. Ah ha. That is why I said I was speaking for the silent majority. How have you helped Uganda their money? Thank you.
So, on the issue of Dunamis coins, I think that is a... I think that is way back. That company's license was revoked and has never been renewed. However, I cannot go into detail on what you could do. Or maybe you as the mayor, I would request you could come to our offices and you could get more into detail. I cannot go into detail because that was me, that was within the higher authorities. Yes. So, I could give you a toll-free line. We do have a toll-free line indeed. Yes.
Hold on. Colleagues, can we stay silent, please, and we listen? Excuse me. Maybe since this is a very serious matter affecting the people here, may I request Umra to come and pitch camp here and understand the problems of the people?
Please, the reason as to why I'm saying this, we are going to have a similar town hall meeting, just like we've had today, and all of you are going to be invited. Yes, it's not that I do not have the authority. I am also just, so it is the top authority that has that power to tell you on what to do.
Just come here. Okay, okay, let's come back to the same order. I think the issues of money lending require a longer time to discuss that particular area. Okay, DJ will guide us on that. Okay. Colleagues, this is a very hot topic and I've agreed with him that Umra is going to come back to Mbaye. You will have all the time with Umra to raise your issues because this town hall here has many issues that we want to cover, of which Umra is only one of them. So Umra has promised that they will have a dedicated session to address your issues. Okay? All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Financial literacy. Hey, Equity Bank, Equity Bank. Let us listen, please. Let us listen. I know, please call them for a moment, we are coming back.
Good afternoon. Sorry, Governor. The issue was raised when we had hiccup somewhere, but we are sorry for that. Thank you so much, Mr. Jukomatin. I've taken, just to take you through the process. The process of default and how the bank ends up probably putting the property on sale. The process starts with notifying the customer on the fact that he's not meeting the loan obligations in writing. It's done two, three, four times before the client is outsourced. So at that time when the client is outsourced, you, the beliefs engage the customer in a discussion to see if there are avenues for repayment. Now, where we fail in everything, still we take the legal process. The property is advertised and the customer is on side of all these processes. So that is when the property probably is disposed of. But according to Mr. Juko, he says some of these processes we are not adhered to. Now, unfortunately, I'm not familiar with this case because it was borrowed from Kampala. Now, I've taken note of the details. We'll be able to do a follow-up. If there is any issue, management will handle. But the process is, a property is liquidated to pay the loan. We have to do it hand in hand with the client. And the client is given legal notifications on what stage we are. So if that was not followed, it's a different case that can be managed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moki, for financial literacy.
I'm Zakara Fat, the manager of Mbaye. I see a number of customers here and I know that you trust what I tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Governor, protocol observed. My name is Makai Awumu. I'm going to respond on the issue of financial literacy from Mr. Masiko Robert. This is a very good question. And first, you will all understand that financial literacy is very important. It's key for transformation to the money economy. For you to be able to manage your finances properly, then financial literacy is indeed very important. So what has Bank of Uganda done? We saw that this was a very important aspect of financial inclusion. So we came up with a strategy, national strategy for financial inclusion. The first one was twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen, and then the revised twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four. We came up with the key semantic areas, key areas for managing personal finances. Things about budgeting, things about savings, things about investment, planning for old age, our financial risks, how you services, key facts, documents about financial services. So this will impart through different avenues. One is what is rising on the issue of training of trainers, trainers of trainers. So this will spread out to the whole country. We have trained over two thousand trainers of trainers and you are one of them, Masiko. And actually, here you are, here as an ambassador of the central bank. And what you should be telling me is that there are some groups have organized which we want you to come and talk to on financial literacy. Otherwise, you are an ambassador on the ground. But I know that the impact has been good. We have gone through radio stations. I've actually been here at Open Gate talking about financial literacy. I've been at Voice of Tesco. I've been at a top radio talking to the whole of this region, eastern region. And eastern region, we have trained over sixty trainers of trainers. So this, we also do in partnership with the different development partners. Now, we're also looking at refugees. You know Uganda were hosting over one point five million refugees. And to the extent that United Nations High Commission for Refugees and other development partners have taken these syllabus which we developed and made it a standard for training people in the camps, how they can manage their money. We have also done this with the other development partners and come with the different core messages which will impact through radio stations and also talk to the National Cultural Development Centre. What is on the table now is that financial literacy should be incorporated in the higher school syllabus to replace the, there's a paper now which is called General Paper. So that at that level, I will have an early entry route where Ugandans can learn financial literacy. But I'm quite confident that there has been an impact because I expected very many questions from you about mobile money, issues of charges and what. I've not had any question. So that means that the impact of the work we are doing as Bank of Uganda is being felt on the ground. We have partnered with U C C, you know, the Top Fera program about these fraudsters on mobile money. Also with the Next Media, there's Beara Study, all these programs. Bank of Uganda is behind these programs. And I think I will have just a side discussion with that gentleman if there's some additional help that might be required. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hassan?
Thank you through you, Deputy Governor. Responding to the concern by the leader, Mbaye Market, about exchanging old notes, turn notes that are not well accepted in the market. Your request was that we come down there to extend that facility. Luckily enough, that market is a few meters away from the central bank. So we, you are a client who we are most conveniently located to access, probably more convenient than Senakaloke. So for you, we shall have Wednesdays open. On Wednesdays, we shall have our gates open to receive turn notes, dirty notes, or notes that are not in good condition, which we shall exchange at full face value without a charge to whoever brings them to us. Thank you so much. Deputy Governor, if you allow me, let me also comment on the question that was raised about printing money for elections, which seems to have gone under the radar. He did. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have tents set up outside here and we have banks. Almost all these banks that are here are represented out here to take the detailed discussion of the personal issues. Where you have a personal loan issue, we are going to have those discussions there. Including the central bank staff are seated there and we are going to have those discussions extended. Including the discussions on if you want to understand more on treasury bills and bonds, you can give a sample and then they will be able to calculate for you. Unfortunately, we, the Deputy Governor has another engagement that he's leaving in the next five minutes. And so I may not be permitted to go beyond this point. I want to candidly, kindly, kindly request that we end here. I know you have, you still have a lot of burning issues within, but let's have those discussed in a tent. Thank you. Can you write the questions? Please write the questions, we pick them and then we come back with a contact and then we come back to you. Thank you. Okay. You come. Deputy Governor has asked me to give you an opportunity and then the chairman for the business community, you come. Ask your questions, two questions, and then we close. But you be brief, please.
Thank you, Governor, on the table. My question is just one. Bank of Uganda Governor. I am legally, Bank of Uganda is an entity and it is an entity different from its workers. How accountable is Bank of Uganda handling the staff, the directors and A B C D who make mistakes in handling some cases that even affect negatively the people? I will take an example of a commission of inquiry by the Committee of Parliament into the mishandling of banks when they were closed. A lot was found to be pointing at mistakes by the workers of the bank. How accountable have they been held? Because up to now, there are banks which have lost their their shares, their money in those banks and yet we cannot even know how to recover it. I particularly was the vice chairman of Uganda Cooperative Alliance and we prevail known as people, the owners, that give us a clear perspective regarding the closure of Coop Bank. The Bank of Uganda refused it. Instead, before we could have any engagement, they said they have sold the bank. Now they are telling us they have liquidated the bank and we have lost. No report. What kind of treatment is that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second one and the last one.
I thank you very much. By name, I'm called Abdullah Zizsharaf, a counselor. From what you have been discussing, I was gonkoshua, taking it serious, that Bank of Uganda, you regulate other banks, you control people's deposits. To an extent of saying in the case one of the commercial bank liquidates, the customer's deposit cannot just go. At least ten million can be recovered as you wait. Now the challenge comes from lending institutions, companies. You have insisted them to give out financial assistance, but you don't regulate their interest rates. And when they mess with our money and they liquidate, you have no more authority to recover our money. And yet you have assured us any company that is lending and registered by you is fully covered and we should trust them. Lending companies that they have taken our money, they have liquidated, it's like you have no answer. To an extent that even our deputy mayor, the twenty million is not small money. She's not very sure of recovery. Some of us, we are just quiet there. We lost the money and we don't know where to start from. Can I say that Bank of Uganda, you are the liar of paying us the money? If we prove that these people were insisted by you or by the organ you control, I need some clarification on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Deputy Governor, we respond to those two. The rest of the questions, please, I urge you to write them. Put a contact and then we can have a physical discussion in the tents. Okay. I will request Huntington to respond to this last question. I'll take the first one. Did you hear the question, Huntington? Yeah, so please respond to it, then I will get the last one.
Thank you, thank you, Governor, once again for giving me the opportunity to stand before this congregation. Let me make certain things very clear. As we, I mentioned yesterday, and apologies for those who weren't here with us. I indicated that we, the financial sector in Uganda is regulated on a tiered basis. We have tier ones, which are the commercial banks, tier twos, which are the credit institutions, tier threes, which are microfinance deposit-taking institutions. Those three categories are licensed and regulated by the central bank. Okay? If you have concerns about those institutions, the central bank will respond. That's why we're here and we're calling these institutions one by one to come and be answerable to you. Then there's the tier four institutions, which are licensed and regulated by the Uganda Microfinance Regulatory Authority. These institutions don't take deposits from the public. And that's where you have Dunhill. Is it Dunhill? Duck Hill? That's where you have Premier? Did I hear Premier? Premier Credit? And I think the institution you're talking about, sir. So those institutions are not licensed and regulated by Bank of Uganda and Bank of Uganda does not have authority over them. They are under the Uganda Microfinance Regulatory Authority. Our concern relates to the institutions that I've mentioned, the tier ones, tier two, tier three, and that's where the Deposit Protection Fund comes in. And I will implore each one of you, deal with institutions that are licensed by Bank of Uganda. I'll mention I'll mention that without fear or favor. Because we have so many concerns, so many complaints, which we can't respond to because you're dealing with institutions we do not know. Thank you, governor.
Yeah, thank you, Huntington. I think the issue here is we should not mix all financial institutions to be regulated by Bank of Uganda. There is a certain category of institutions that are regulated by Bank of Uganda, like Huntington has mentioned. And those are the ones whose complaints we are competently able to handle. We have been given the powers under the law. You cannot go and regulate, begin controlling an institution which the law does not permit you to. So if there are any concerns about an institution that has been empowered by law for Bank of Uganda to regulate, these are the ones that we are discussing here. But not all financial institutions, no. Now, the question raised by the chairman of the business community. Yes, there was, there was an investigation in parliament, particularly Kossase. Kossase made a report of their findings. That report was received by Bank of Uganda. And Bank of Uganda has implemented to the dot all the recommendations that came from that, from Kossase. So I raise my case. Thank you. Okay, so colleagues, I really, really want to thank you for the candidness that you have demonstrated. It is very, very unfortunate that time has not been our ally in this situation. And in some cases, we might have used highly technical languages because I was wondering how to translate E S G into Lumazaba. So if I didn't break down E S G into Lumazaba, please forgive me. If I did not explain price stability very well, forgive me. But I tried to give an example that price stability is just an average of the prices. Some prices can be high, others can be low. I gave you the example of Nobad Mawo, where half of your body is in hell, half of your body is in a fridge, but on average, you're okay. So, I mean, we might not have really, we might not have really drilled down into the communication and we are working on how best to improve our communication. So bear with us that with more and more time, we will get to know the language. But I really want to appreciate you so much for the candidness that you've raised. We take into account the questions that you have posed to us. And as a central bank, we are here to listen because we want to improve on our outcomes to serve the society better. Particularly that last aspect of our mission statement, in support of socio-economic transformation. The issue of climate, the issue of agricultural credit facility, those issues that serve to get people out of poverty is important. Even price stability itself, when you have high prices, the poor are the most affected because they don't have different assets. Either they have just cash and a cow. So if inflation goes up, it, it makes the amount of goods and services that they can buy, it becomes smaller. So their purchasing power is reduced. So we are here to protect the poor as a central bank. Don't look at us as a central bank as some kind of, you know, those guys talk to themselves. No, we don't talk to ourselves. That's why we're here, to talk to you today, to hear from you today. And I really want to thank you very, very much for the time that you have invested. I'm sure I would have gone on and on and on, but I have other commitments that I need to attend to. But once again, I really want to thank you for the time you spent with us for the last two days. And all I can say is, may the almighty God bless you abundantly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, deputy governor. Now I want to invite the Ara Sisi to come and close for us this session officially.
The deputy governor, Bank of Uganda, all my friends at the front bench, respected leaders, fellow citizens, servants, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ajon Rex Achila, the Ara Sisi of Mbale. But for now, before I thank you for what you have engaged yourselves in, we are operating in a twin environment where I have my colleague, the Ara D C of Mbale. And it will not be hospitable for me, DG, to close without giving her an opportunity, especially when she's coming from my leave. Liver, closed mouth. And I think she should just speak to you for only one minute, then I can close. Just in the spirit of brotherhood. Please, you're welcome. Ara D C.
Thank you, Mr. Ara Sisi, the deputy governor, Bank of Uganda, the honourable member of parliament present, protocol observed. My name is Nasike Asmin. I'm the Ara D C of Mbale district. I'm as well the regional whip of Ara D C's of Bugisusab region. It is a great honour that the Ara Sisi has given me one minute to say hello to you in the event that I just came from my leave and I'm still having that hangover of the leave. I want to thank you, the governor, Bank of Uganda, for providing such a platform for the Wana Inchi to learn what happens in Bank of Uganda. Sometimes, the citizens thought that Bank of Uganda only transacts with the commercial banks. But yesterday, I learnt that we could as well trade with you through the commercial banks. That is really very important. And I want to ask those that want to trade with Bank of Uganda to really not fear from now, but engage with our commercial banks to reach them. There was one aspect that was very important, especially on how we handle the notes and coins that Bank of Uganda prints. We realise that when we handle these notes badly, then we cost Bank of Uganda, and that is government, to reprint more money. And of course, government is you and me. So we need to protect our notes to ensure that they stay the lifetime that they're meant to. Mr. Ara Sisi, I want to conclude by saying that while I was speaking about moneylenders, I heard the congregation mama. I want to say that these people are suffering with moneylenders. The Microfinance Regulatory Authority has no authority over what it is doing. We have seen our people suffer, give in IDs, give in ATM cards, give in whatever, which microfinance authorities say they are not meant to do. Now, if you have licensed a microfinance institution and it is giving, it is taking away those things they're not supposed to take, then what regulatory authority are you? You must check yourself. I will stop there by wishing all the mamas are aware and request that our offices are open. In case of any eventualities, please visit us. I want to thank you for coming and please come again for decentralisation. Thank you.
DG, I think I will join the rest of my colleagues here in thanking you on behalf of the bank for functionalising the responsibilities of our central bank. We thank you broadly on behalf of Ugandans for regulating the country's currency in the interest of the common progress of all citizens. In spite of the challenges that you have gone through and we have gone through as a global village in respect of COVID-19 and in particular, as Uganda, the challenges we have had with the insecurity that we have been grappling with as a country. Bank of Uganda has remained steadfast in ensuring that our inflationary engagements do not go overboard. We thank you. DG, the people of Uganda, and in particular of this region, have been associating the bank with a lot of issues. With the high prices that are going on, with the reverse of so much money, especially in local governments. At the end of the financial year, all money is swept to the consolidated fund and is never given back in the next financial year. And I've been thinking that, I think there's a connivance between the Ministry of Finance and Bank of Uganda to deny Ugandans the services. But now with this engagement which you have had, and I can agree, you can agree with me, that this engagement has been a tripartite arrangement where we have had here, you, the team of Bank of Uganda, we have also had the representatives of the very many commercial banks operating here. And we have had the leaders, the leaders who matter in the governance of this country. Sir, I want to inform you that this kind of engagement has been missing. And therefore, we would like to say it should be the beginning of now and never to fail it again. Because when you look at this, from the challenges and the issues that have been raised by the people in this meeting, the moneylenders issue is a very serious matter. And as chairman of security, just like many other Ara D C's in the region, the moneylenders are part of insecurity in the country. Serious insecurity. And since you supervise even Humra, we would like you to prevail over and above this kind of situation and never underrate it. Because here, you heard people saying, these moneylenders are banyankole. I must tell you, that is what they are saying. And this is very bad for this country. We don't want to take this country back to those old days of anarchy. And those who are handing, who are doing this are people who are of small age. Fifteen years, twenty years, thirty years are moneylenders. So when you hear sentiments of this kind, it is good. It was even brought by the director of ISO. We were given the responsibility to compile a report, which I did from Mbale. And that message was, these moneylenders are banyankole. And I'm not happy about it. Why should we keep quiet about it? We must respond to the concerns of the people. And therefore, these people who are doing this kind of business must be tuned down. We must not allow everybody, every tom and dick, to be a moneylender. I have just a case in my office where teachers in Mbale district and Mbale city have lost money to these maroons, they are called the mahinas, who are eating people to the marrow. So we must cut down and know who are these people and how many are they. For us, we have told our commercial officer, the city, the city town clerk, to compile a list of all these people so that we save the country from insecurity. Secondly, the banks that are here, the commercial banks, I think let's discuss and agree on some of these issues from a very friendly side. You have also been doing a lot of this service. Even of recent, even if you go, DG, outside and you see how the common person, the lowest person is fighting for his PDM. That is the Paristiveon Medal. You will see that there is a lot of abuse. And the commercial banks are not looking at this as a source of insecurity. Where people go there, line for a long time, others claim they are going to be, they are given schedules for payments and they are not paid for a very long time. People have come to us and talked about this. The president has been very critical about this. The commercial banks are not doing business to help the common person. They are only doing profits. So this kind of engagement, people are sleeping outside, you can hear their dissenting voices. And people are not doing well. And why are the commercial banks concentrating only in Mbale? We have seven local governments in Bugisu region. All the banks are concentrated here and all the people in the region come to Mbale. They are causing us problems, including accidents and even thefts. They are not responding. Why are they not opening branches outside in those other places? And decongest the city. We have issues. Governor, we have issues. The decentralisation policy. You are the bankers of government. The decentralisation policy, I think, needs to be revisited. Because in our policy, we say decentralisation is to take services nearer to the people. And as far as fiscal policy is concerned, Bank of Uganda cannot hide. To our device government, that local governments must be given full fiscal decentralisation. Local governments are operating at a corner, at a fixed, that every time, they remain beggars of central government. And yet, the ministries are not seeing this kind of problem. It is hurting governance, it is also hurting the way we can convince the people that we are decentralised. Lastly, DG, the use of mobile money versus cybercrime. DG, this one also is a big problem as we implement. I know we are moving faster with our technology, including the incoming of artificial intelligence. And the people at which, the rate at which we are adapting the technology is faster than how people are coping up. The mobile money we are talking about, I have ever got people come to my office and I engage with them in the streets. The illiteracy, the poverty the people have, does not allow people to wait. You are saying that when you get 100,000 in your wallet, you keep, you keep it in the pocket. For how long? When the children are really starving? This is what you see from the village. For me, I don't have any cash. I have all my money in my mobile wallet. If you want, I can give you through the wallet. I don't have cash. But the ordinary person there in the streets, the public streets of Mbale, are suffering because we have run faster than the way they can absorb this technology. And therefore, when you look at what is happening on the ATM centres, this is also creating a lot of insecurity. And we need to do something faster. That's where I want to call you as a lead bank, to make these engagements even more grassroots. If not, facilitate the agents of local governments to take your message, to take your message to the least population in the villages. So that people can really get the whole message, how you are helping them and how we are helping as a team. We want to share with you and we make our commitments to work with Bank of Uganda, to make the country and the people of Uganda proud. I say all this for God and my country. I thank all of you, those who have helped us. Please, I'm releasing you to go for lunch. I'm told the governor has given you lunch. And I would like to end here because I'm not closing. There is somebody to close. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ara Sisi, for those good comments. As I said, we have tents outside there talking about various issues, including Salam Bank. I have received so many questions on Salam Bank. You'll get those details. Humra promised to give you the toll-free number. Please take your pen and paper. Please take your pen and paper and write these numbers for Umura. The toll-free number is 0800. Sorry, I begin. 0800. Or the landline, 0417799700. Okay, I repeat, the first one was 0800111449. The second one is 0417799700. For any inquiries to Bank of Uganda, one, you can write and bring your complaint to the branch here in Mbaye. You can also call 0312392191. Are we clear there? I repeat. 0312. It is the last repeat. I'm not repeating the class again. You can also send an email on F C E M. F C E M at B O U dot O R dot U G. F C E M at B O U dot O R dot U G. For SCF, Agricultural Credit Facilities, you can call the toll-free number at Bank of Uganda on 0800. SCF is 0800144044. With that, DPF, you have yours, but this one you have to pay for because now the Bulango time has gone. For DPF, the Deposit Protection Fund is 0312206400. With that, I want to thank you so much for being a very good audience and for being patient and for the candid questions. We know that in the future, we shall have other engagements of this nature and all these other questions will be continually answered. We are ending this session. As informed, the Deputy Governor has provided lunch. I want to request that you stay where you are. The Ashas will come issue with a coupon. The coupon is what differentiates you between yourself and a plate of food. If you don't have a coupon, the hotel does not know you. Okay? So please, stay calm and then we have the coupons for the meal. The other programme is the High Table and the District Leadership. We are going to take a group picture here in front, just immediately after this closing. With that, I want to invite the Reverend Father Jude Ochen to come and give us a closing prayer. I received the notification that you are available and you're ready. And after the closing prayer, we shall sing the anthems in reverse order and we move.
Sorry, I make a correction. I'm not Father Jude. I am Father Romanus Olwen. Yes, I'm a head teacher of St Paul's College, Mbaye. As the year ends, that's where you can take those who have finished SP7 this year and senior four. Thank you. So may we rise and we give honour to God. God-loving Father, we thank you for this day, for these two days that we have gone after financial literacy. We thank you for the knowledge that we have received. We thank you also for the fears that we have been calmly down because of the knowledge we have received. We thank you for the gift of the facilitators, Bank of Uganda, and the trust that we have developed in our bank. We pray, Lord, that you may continue to bless your children, bless this country, bless us in all that we undertake. And particularly, Lord, when we talk about money, stability, we are looking at the welfare of your children. Yes, the times are hard and we pray that you may journey with us during these difficult times, that things may be easier and better, that our people may live a more meaningful life, the way you want for your children. We pray this through Christ our Lord.
Thank you. We shall remain standing and sing the anthems in reverse order, but one stanza for each, starting with the Bamasaba anthem, the East African anthem, and the Uganda National Anthem. Thank you. Join up, please organise. People are many, can some sit and then...